convene the August 20th, 2024, 2:00 p.m. meeting to order at 3:07 p.m. With no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 3:07 p.m. And we will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 20th, 2024 to order at 3:07 p.m. Please join me for a moment of silence. We will now recognize work session speakers. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items a speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation. The staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. We do have one card so far here, and it is, let me see. And so we have Dr. Northcutt. We are ready to hear from you. When any speaker here is called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments. You'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. And please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you are forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of the translator, speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meeting so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the sergeant-at-arms shall remove the council from the council meeting. Any person who, while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting, makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or if they become boisterous, or if they make unauthorized remarks from the audience, clap hands, stomp feet, whistle, yell, or make similar demonstrations. So we first start with Dr. Northcutt. Are you ready? We call to the podium, just state your name and address for the record. Doctor? And we have your handout, too, up here.
Northcutt, I believe you do have the handout. This is concerning the Riverway complex. Now Caldwell's responses in the handout are good things. I mean, energy-efficient construction, natural features, trails, and parks. But in 2024, in a crucial moment of our climate emergency, these will not significantly decrease the city's greenhouse gas emissions. And cutting emissions is what the council has pledged to do and is in fact boasted about doing this. We must focus on the largest sources of emissions while planning this subdivision. Those are transportation and energy. On transportation, Caldwell can build hiking trails to the moon, and this will not cut emissions as long as residents are driving gasoline or diesel vehicles. Thus, in a master plan for the future of this complex, we must facilitate the transition to EVs through EV-ready garages, EV chargers at businesses, and community buildings. And in fact, the International Code Council supports this. On energy, Caldwell's energy-efficient materials are nice but would have a small impact. Most important, the subdivision must be all-electric. Now, as you know, the Inflation Reduction Act has billions for the conversion of gas appliances to electric. By building all-electric at the onset, future expensive retrofits will be unnecessary. This will save the homeowner money and improve citizen health. And for power generation, the complex can contribute by making the more expensive homes solar-ready, and the community building should include solar and batteries. Now, these steps are really modest compared to what some subdivisions in the U.S. are doing, such as having solar on all homes and really reaching zero emission status. But this, in my view, in our view, is a good starting place for Waco. We've just experienced another global emergency during the COVID pandemic. We didn't treat this with chicken soup, but with science, specific vaccine. Climate is just as much an emergency, but it's a slowly evolving one, as you know. So we need specific action as for COVID. Citizens support what we're calling for, as you know from the letters and emails you've received and from the petition you have. But it's up to the council to lead on this. Of course, the developers don't want change because it might take some time and some expense. But remember, at one time, developers said running water and indoor toilets were also too expensive to include. So they oppose this change. So do we treat the planet's extreme fever with powerful antibiotics or with chicken soup? After the council has pledged action to not lead on making this complex climate-friendly for the 21st century, it can only be called one thing: greenwashing. So we call on the city to lead and build this complex for the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Northcutt. Ladies and gentlemen, is anyone else present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item this afternoon? There being none, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from City Manager Bradley Ford.
Welcome, Council, and to the public. We do have one informal report. Dr. Northcutt referred to IR 575 that speaks to the environmental efforts at the Riverway Development, which has received significant economic development incentives from the city of Waco. That agreement was signed previously and is in full effect from May earlier this year. We did have 10 public hearings today. Clint Peters is actually out today, so Laura Wagstaff, I see in the audience, will be joining us to give an overview of those public hearings later in the work session. We've got quite a host of resolutions, 29 to be exact, on the agenda today. I'm going to highlight just a few of them. I think they're of public interest and an interest to the council as well. First is Resolution 599. It's an action item today. Council will consider this resolution. It accomplishes two key elements in the budget and tax rate adoption process. First, it establishes the maximum tax rate for the city of Waco at 75.5 cents. That's your current rate. That's the current rate we have in the current year equal to that rate. This sets the ceiling the council can consider. Obviously, in our budget work session later, if there is interest of the council to move that rate down, we can still work in that direction. Second, this proposed rate we're noting is below the voter approval tax rate but above the no new revenue tax rate. It also, the resolution sets the public hearing as required by the Texas Tax Code for 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 3rd. Tuesday, September 3rd, 6:00 p.m. Resolution 609 is my second highlight. It awards a contract to Elite Construction for the Doris Miller Indoor Pool Rehabilitation Project for just over $882,000 in District 1. The city purchased the Doris Miller Community Center in the fall of 2001 from the YMCA of Central Texas and has since been renovating it and reopened most of the facility last summer to the public. The next phase of the renovation is, of course, the indoor pool, which does require significant rehabilitation of its systems and as well as the building that encloses the pool. We'll have a variety of upgrades as well anticipated related to its safety, functionality, and aesthetics. We expect the project to take about 90 days to complete, which puts us opening in December of 2024. And I know we had a speaker at a prior meeting, and I mentioned it would be done by November, so we're going to miss that by about 30 days. December of 2024 is our opening. And once opened, the pool will offer different programs like swim lessons, water aerobics, along with open hours for swimming for our community members. Next highlights, I wanted to highlight Resolutions 610 to 612 as well as 619. These are all resolutions where our departments are working with state and federal partners to bring in resources into Waco through grants. And it includes the Health District as well as our Public Works Department and our Sustainability Department working to bring external funding sources to the city. And I really appreciate that because, as we've discussed in prior sessions relative to the budget, we're in a fiscally constrained environment. It's always a good idea to seek external funding, but particularly as of now it is, so that we can continue to build support for our unfunded programs. Resolution 613, I wanted to highlight this one, too. It's often something that people watch for out in the public. And it's hard to believe, though, the college football season is here, but we're bringing 613 to the council today because Baylor Bears are starting their season, I think, in like 10 days. And the Resolution 613 deals with traffic modifications along roadways in Texas State Right-of-Way for each of the Baylor games in the fall season. If you're asking my opinion, I think seven wins is the number for this year. Seven's the number.
Bowl-eligible.
That's what I'm going for, anyway. The agreement on your agenda includes the traffic plans around McLain and across Baylor's campus and will include the placement and removal of more than 400 traffic cones, barrels, and temporary signs. And that's quite an initiative that a lot of our public safety and team members throughout the region participate in. Resolution 620 to 22 is my last highlight, I believe. Yes, those are my last highlights, and they all deal with various activities to support our solid waste operations. Three vehicle purchases totaling about $800,000, a little over $800,000, to ensure that Cody and the team can get the trash picked up and get it buried at the landfill each day. We'd have four ordinances on your agenda today. Ordinance 626 is the only one on first reading. It is the consideration of the reappointment for Judge Robert Garcia as your judge of the municipal court. The other three ordinances are on for second reading. That concludes my report today, Mayor, and I'll take any questions that you have for me.
Any questions for Bradley? I'll just say on the resolutions, I had a couple picked out. I just wanted to briefly comment on 597, number one. Resolution 2024, 597, and that has to do with Councilmember Bearfield being appointed to the Board of Directors for the National League of Cities and also chairperson to the Race Equity Leadership Committee of the NLC. Just so much appreciate what Councilmember Bearfield does for the city of Waco and also nationally. I mean, she's all over the place in the nation, also very active in the Texas TLC. What is it?
TML.
TML. TLC. Bring the TLC to the TML. Yeah. Texas League of Cities, Texas Municipal League. But yeah, and I'm so happy that you do that. And you bring best practice. In fact, we just talked about it a few minutes ago. You bring, you see what Waco Plus looks like in some of these other cities, and you bring that knowledge and you share that information with us council members and with the city. So I'm glad and happy that you're using your considerable public service skills to benefit the city. This is just another example of what you're doing. The second one, I just want to say the number 598 that appoints me to the parking authority. My wife Cindy will say I'm no authority on parking, that's for sure. But I will, I park way too far away, but now I'm officially going to be a parking authority on parking. The...
Does that mean the rest of us are not on it?
The parking authority. I think you guys are on still. The number 13, I also wanted to mention just the, this is the pool, Doris Miller, doing the repairs on that. We got a lot of questions this summer, at least I got a lot of questions. Where can we swim? Where can, it's so hot, we want a public pool. This is an indoor pool, the Doris Miller Quinn Campus up there, that we are getting ready, we are getting fixed. It's almost a million-dollar project there, making it a priority for a pool repair, and there will be a pool. I forget, what is the timeline on that?
End of the year.
Yeah, end of the year. That's great. And the last comment I wanted to say was number 18, the sidewalks. It's another sidewalk project. And what, two things I like about this, it's a sidewalk project, three things, really. The second one is that Texas Department of Transportation, TxDOT, is paying for the bigger part of it because we found a program there that we could use that was really connectivity, it met connectivity standards, so we were able to get a state grant. And I just like the connectivity portion. It was over on Jefferson, connects the kind of the St. Francis area north there, and there's a map of it in the book. But it's, the more sidewalks, the quality sidewalks we can get in town, the better. And particularly, we can get the state to chip in some of the money. But great job on all of these, Bradley. So the consent agenda includes resolution, or any other comments on the resolutions, guys? Nothing? Or the ordinances? Or any questions for Bradley on anything?
Mayor, none from District 3.
D3, nothing. Okay. Consent agenda includes Resolution 2024, 597 through Resolution 2024, 625, except for Resolution 2024, 602, Resolution 2024, 604, Resolution 2024, 605, and Resolution 2024, 613. And Councilmember Boarder has filed an ASI on those. Okay. The next item on the agenda is work session items 2024, 576 through 2024, 581. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
It would be my pleasure. We've got a great collection of work sessions today. Our first one is Work Session 576. I'm going to invite Milet Hopping, our President and CEO of Waco Housing Authority, up to the table, and she'll be giving us a discussion, an update of Waco Housing Authority and affiliates' activities and operation within the city of Waco. I'm excited to see it because I know Milet and the board have been doing a whole lot in our community, and this is a moment where the council and public can get a sense of that. So Milet, thanks for spending the time with us today.
No problem. Okay. So, good afternoon, everybody. Yes, we have a presentation. So I'm going to try to keep it to the time limit I was given, so there's a lot going on. I'm going to try and get through most of this. But in a couple of sentences, our mission and vision is simply to preserve affordable housing and create affordable housing. And of course, we want to do that in a very roundabout way that is wholesome and healthy as well and increases housing choices for residents. So... Okay, good. So we have a public facility corporation, and actually, two of those. One is simply WPFC II is established in 2005, but it's basically the issuer of bonds. It does nothing else, and we're using that in our pending Shady Acres partnership and, of course, for the bond issuance that we use to do RAD at South Terrace, which all the units are completed. We are now in the phase at South Terrace where we're doing the zerescaping, if I say that correctly, and playgrounds. So hopefully, in about six weeks, we will be officially finished with that. WPFC are, it was established in 1997. We are the owners of some RTC properties, Resolution Trust Corporation properties. These were properties that, when the savings and loans were not doing so well in Texas, the state formed a Resolution Trust Corporation, and housing authorities were given first right of refusal to purchase any of those properties that were located in your jurisdictional area. So there were five that we ended up purchasing long-term, and you'll see under there that we also included Sandstone, Avila, and we also own 19 acres on Ritchie Road, which we will be trying to develop for more affordable housing. Our Waco Housing Opportunities Corporation, we also split up some of the ownership of the RTC properties there. We are looking to also develop our Gurley Lane property. We have nine acres there, and we're considering seniors and possibly some family or homeownership there. Liberty Villages, we have a partnership there, there on Golson Road. And Page Estates is also a pending partnership. They're going to be located directly across from Kate Ross, and it will be for 64 units only for elderly, and 12 of those will be affordable and available to housing choice vouchers. So that's our private side. Then the HUD publicly funded side, of course, Kate Ross, Stella Maxi, MART. We took over for MART in 2010, and it's not listed here, but we also took over for Hill County. So our jurisdictional area actually goes all the way up to just the tip of Burleson over to Mansfield in Hill County, and we cover Johnson County, Hood County, obviously McLain County, and I'm forgetting something. But anyway, we have four counties that we actually cover. So we're also facilitating smaller housing authorities to convert to nonprofits so that we will act as their Section 8 agent as long as they're within our jurisdictional area. So we have done that with Grandview, and we're about to close for Granberry Housing Authority. Okay. Whoops. Sorry. Let me go back. Okay, one more. Okay. I wanted you to see where our Public Facility Corporation buildings are being built or the jurisdictional areas. So our goal is to give housing choice vouchers, holders, an ability to live closer to their jobs, to the school district they want to live in. And basically, if I could put one such complex in every zip code in Waco or McLain County, I would do so. That gives people the right to choose wherever they want to live and make choices about their life they don't presently have right now due to the lack of affordable housing that we find here. So you'll see the list of those units there on your left, and like I said, we welcome partnerships all the time. We work very closely with the Housing Division at the city of Waco so that we are managing this process carefully. We do offer the tax exemption through our Public Facility Corporation. Okay. I guess I don't, I pushed too hard. But to give you an idea of what we're talking about units, I need to go back one more. So this is a version of rising images. These were the RTC properties. So these are Cimarron Huntington and Misty Square Apartments. They are actually located on Panther Way. They're considered part of Waco, not part of Hewitt or Woodway.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah.
Where are you going to put the 250 housing units for Kate Ross?
They're going to still stay on Kate Ross. We're just going to do it in phases so that we can move them.
So it's going to be the same property? You're just knocking down some old units?
Yes. So we're accumulating vacancies to do that. So we'll move people to one side of the property, and then they'll tear down the other part, rebuild it, and go from there. We're hoping to do that as part of a Choice Neighborhood Grant in conjunction with the city, and we're in the process right now in partnership with the city of scoring the final two applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here's an example. There's actually 288 units at Kate Ross, and we have two scattered sites at Kate Ross. One is a building that is directly much closer to I-35 and Baylor, and the other building is right across from Mama and Papa Bear's Barbecue. Both those properties house referrals from the Behavioral Health Network, and so we've worked really hard to assist those people who might otherwise have not had alternatives of places to live. So I wanted you to know about what we see as a demand based on just solely our wait list. So on the left, you will see columns that show where we are right now. So this is our housed, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom. But on your right is actually the evidence from our wait list. So I need 10% more one-bedrooms at Kate Ross. I need less two-bedrooms. I need about 2% or 3% more three-bedrooms, and I need about double what I have for four bedrooms. So part of what we want to do is address the wait list because that's the need we have right now when we go to remodel and redevelop. So this is a better example of what I said, but we're under demand at Kate Ross, and then we, the waiting list, as you can see, is over demand. Melody Grove, which is really a Stella Maxi at the moment, we don't go to closing until November, so we're not going to call it Melody Grove till we go to closing. So the unit composition, as you can see on the left side, or at least my left, is showing you the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom makeup as well as the four-bedroom, but there's the wait list demand. So obviously, you can see at that wait list, there is considerably more need for one-bedrooms, a little bit less on two-bedrooms, a little less on three-bedrooms, and about half of the same need for four-bedrooms. Okay, so I'm going to skip the breakout like that so I can keep to the same thing. So HCV is really our housing choice voucher program, so this is our wait list by bedroom size. So there is presently a one-bedroom wait list for almost 42% of that wait list. There's a 34% wait list for our two-bedrooms, not quite 20% for three-bedrooms, and only about 4.5% for four-bedrooms. So as you all know, the wait list can stay closed for three or four years at a time based on allocation from HUD as well as funding. So it's important to us that we keep track of what we need bedroom-wise so that when we go looking for development partners to either preserve affordable housing or create it, that we're addressing our needs that are already existing on those wait lists. Okay, so Brad, the conversion, like I said, was almost complete. This is the breakout based on bedrooms, and there'll be some before and after pictures here because we're so close. And so if we get through these... Everybody got new appliances? Okay, so special programs, I'm hoping that y'all were interested in these as well. So we have a total of 2,871 vouchers that have been, are just regular programming vouchers, but we have special programs on top of that. So foster youth or aging out of care, we have been assigned 26 vouchers for those. Emergency housing vouchers, we were only assigned 34, but we matched the additional because of the need that was expressed to us from the Continuum of Care and Homeless Coalition. Homeownership, we presently have 11 that we're paying on mortgages for, so only in the Section 8 program can you use your voucher. For those of you that aren't aware of it, typical tenant will pay their 30% of their monthly income to their landlord, and we pay the difference, so about 70% of what that going rate is. But we can also apply that same voucher to a mortgage company or a mortgage through a bank or anyone else on behalf of the tenant, as long as they're paying their 30%, and they would own the house in that program. And there are no limits to that program. There are some requirements. You have to have worked for at least a year. If there are credit issues, we do partner with NeighborWorks and with, Mike Stone, sorry, over at Grassroots, and we work with the tenant to improve their credit, to earn about, learn about financial literacy. Also, simple household repairs. They have to earn a homeownership certificate in order to keep going through that process. Of course, we have 70 VASH vouchers. We are presently asking for an additional 34 vouchers from HUD. Eight of those will be VASH vouchers, so those are for homeless veterans or nearly homeless veterans. And then 26 project-based vouchers with a preference for veterans that will be housing and managing for the VA on their site. Mainstream is for elderly only. You have 26 to do and above. Once you turn 65, you're no longer eligible for the program, so it's a three-year window where you can be assisted. And as you can see, our elderly population right now within all of our programs is 440, and our disabled population is 856.
For the VA program, is that in addition to the new Freedom's Path renovated?
No, it is Freedom's Path.
It is what that's for. Okay. And so y'all are managing the housing vouchers for that?
Right. And we'll manage the property for them also, so our maintenance will take care of it and so on, once they're built.
Oh, glad to hear that. All right. Thank you.
No problem. It was our hope and great honor to serve the veterans. Okay, so as you all know, we have a very active community services department, and listed here are several of the programs that we typically do. We didn't really have enough time to list everything, but just so that you know, these are probably the most often activities that you would hear or recognize, or partnerships that we would be doing work with, both for seniors and kids, families as well. We do have licensed social workers who do in-home assessments, both for families and for seniors. And so here are some pictures. Recently, we hosted our 23rd year of our Go to College trip. This year, they went to Arkansas, visited four colleges and universities there. We are very lucky that a chunk of the programming that was done included important sites to see, civil rights, Little Rock High School, and so on. So the kids come back, they create a video, which is under work right now with a team from Baylor University, and we'll be able to use that to help find more sponsors because it doesn't seem to get less expensive every year. Okay, so they're listed by site, are our partnerships. We rely heavily on our local neighborhood organizations that help us with everything. So I will say that under FSS, that's how we get our homeownership piece. So grassroots, neighborworks are extremely important, but also Lone Star Legal Aid and legal assistance for our clients, not just because sometimes they have issues with their landlords, but also for things like wills, living wills and so on for seniors. So it's a big deal. If we didn't have half these programs, I don't know what people would do for alternatives. So we personally pay for the computer labs that are open at each site after school. We man the app. We also have a partnership with, to help tenants who need rental assistance through the Texas Rent Relief Funds. But we also had applied at one time for a state program that gave us about $2 million, which has lasted for almost four years. It will end next year, and it would pay for deposits, legal help, utility, if they were behind in their utilities, would pay for those, that kind of assistance. It would not pay for rent, but it would pay for your credit check at an apartment complex or those kinds of things. So just to say, it has not taken very long to spend that money. Okay, and of course, we're always proud of our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, so this is a contractual agreement between us, and it is a voluntary program for tenants who are either living in public housing or Section 8 voucher recipients, to attain life goals about job training, education, employment, all those things. So they set up a goal, they have five years to get it done, and at the end of that, there is an escrow payment that is based on what they've been paying for rent for the last five years. So just last week, I attended an event where we gave out a check for $13,000, and she intends to buy a house with it. So she's staying in Waco, she works out at M&amp;M Mars, so she is, you know, one of our examples. But we have lots of those over the course of all these years. Okay, I think that is it for me. Public Facility Program, and I was just talking about that, we've spent most of that money already, so by next year, we will, we've been awarded extra money the last three years, and I'm not sure they'll have enough money to do it again. So do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Hoppe? Any questions? Mayor Portman?
Yes.
Hello. Hello.
Hi.
How are you this afternoon?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks so much. I think I speak for all of council when I say we are very grateful for your dedication and commitment to our city and its citizens in providing quality affordable housing through the just innumerable ways that you do so, that you presented here today. It's not just, we're going to renovate an older apartment complex and make it nice and affordable. It's not just, we're going to give a voucher. You have your fingers in so many different areas to help with the holistic take on providing housing to our citizens, so I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you.
I am really interested in the work you guys have done in rehabbing our older properties. And I think when I was on council in 2020, was the first one that got redone. Yeah, South Terrace, as you were accruing vacancies there and remodeling, and that was such an awesome thing to see come to fruition in the years since, and we've got a couple more on the docket now. Could you explain a little more what the incentive is for developers there, how you work with them, what is provided by the housing authority, and then what the expectation is on the people taking on the projects?
Sure. So if it's a property we already own, like South Terrace, we have to go out for bid. We choose a developer based on several different things. One was the ability to work with us, but the other was structured financing and also their ability to complete a low-income housing tax credit deal because we needed it. The amount of money needed was...
Substantial.
Substantial. And so we picked one, and we've gone through that. I will say, we hit so many hurdles, right? COVID, so construction didn't even start for, you know, eight months after it was supposed to start. And then we had a wonderful ice storm that we never were going to expect, and it did $4 million worth of damage.
Oh, wow.
To roofs that were covered with tarps and things like that. And so we had to go back to the state, we went and got insurance money, but by then, construction costs were rising. So it managed to fill the gap, but it did take us longer than we anticipated to get it done. We are officially now, unit-wise, completed, but we have the site checklist that still has to be finished. So I'm hoping to have a big ribbon-cutting ceremony as soon as my placecapes are all installed and the Xera scaping is done.
Yeah.
So, but that's what we look for, and when it comes to property we don't own, we try to look at whether or not it's going to be helpful. It is not unusual for the housing authority to have a 3,000-person waitlist waiting for our Housing Choice Voucher Program to open. Depending on whether I get funded or not, I can use all my vouchers or not. And so sometimes we just don't get enough money for the number of vouchers I have. Sometimes I have plenty of money and we rent all of them out. When it's a property that I'm looking at, there are a couple of considerations I will make. I like to do properties where there will be some aspect that allows somebody on a waitlist like mine to have somewhere to live, so they're not living in their car, they're not living, you know, on a park bench somewhere. So there's a place I can refer them to that's based on their income and rent, it's just not a property of ours. And so we did that with Trendwood, which is now called Riverside with the city, mainly because I knew 154 people, and probably almost all of those are on my Section 8 waitlist. But it's a safe place for them to be. So that was one of the considerations. The partnership for Liberty Village, which is behind Melody Grove, for us, it was important for me to know that there would be places for if I should have had anybody miss, that I had to relocate, that they could still be in their same church, if that's what they wanted, by having this proximity to our property. And then by the same token, we did want to work with anything that would help us get additional jobs in the area and so forth, which we did talk to the developer about selling 10 acres to the Central Texas Food Bank, and they're going to hire 100 people, so hopefully, you know, that all goes through. But when I look at the other partnerships with my Public Facility Corporation, so we're making those properties tax exempt. So our part in that partnership is pretty much that I ask for set-asides for my vouchers. That's how my voucher holders will have a choice about where they want to live. But they have to do a 50/50 split, so 50% of those units have to be at fair market, the other 50% have to be below 80. And just so we're clear, I only help the people who are qualifying at 30%. So the difference there is that workforce housing, so those are people who are making $17 to $21 an hour, they're not making the roughly $27, $28 an hour you need to pay rent in our area. So that workforce housing then provides a discounted rent, which I don't provide, but it's negotiated by me with the developer. They have to give, if they want my tax exemption, then they have to give those workforce housing units that discounted rent. So more at 60% for the people who are there, and 60% of median, and then a little bit less when you start getting closer to 80%. So some developers like that, some don't. So we also won't deal with a developer who isn't going to stay at least five years, won't do a deal that's less than 20 years of affordability. I want people to have those options for at least 20 years. So that's sort of the criteria we use, and then, you know, we charge them for it.
Yeah. That's great, and it's a lot, and I feel like you roll out of bed and forget more about housing and affordable housing than I could stand to learn if I deep dove this for the next, you know, three, four, five months. So I appreciate that. I am, you know, there's a lot of, you hear the term NIMBY, I'm more of a YIMBY, I'm like, let's build as much affordable housing as we possibly can in our city and put it in my backyard, I don't care. And, or I should say, but with that, from the city standpoint, with my good governance cap on, I do feel the tension of providing tax exemption to large apartment complexes en masse, because again, on one side, I'm like, let's build as many of these as we possibly can. If we can get developers to say yes, let's do what we can to make that happen. And there are some city cost savings to providing quality housing for people, for programs we don't have to run because people are housed and things like that. But long-term, I would love to explore as many options as possible that would allow us to recoup some sort of cost rather than full abatement for the services rendered to the apartment complexes, because I don't know how much longer you're going to be doing this, but I would imagine you've got big plans to do a lot more of these. So I want to see them, and I want to make sure that we are equipped to provide services to them as best we can.
Sure, and I appreciate that. To be honest with you, I'm kind of trying to put my toe in the water for community land trusts to build housing, but using, you know, our ability for that tax exemption to build housing, so the property would be exempt but not the structure. And so I think that would be a nice transition piece that I think we lack, and I hope I'm not alone in feeling that way, but I think we need that, given the rising cost of homeownership with this. For most people, their biggest sign of wealth ever stepped for wealth is in their home. But I do appreciate the ability to come and talk to you. Anytime you guys have questions, you know where to reach me. Okay.
Thanks, Mel.
Appreciate you. I just want to express my appreciation. Great, the scope of what you do is impressive. When you look at those first two slides, 18 and 19, of all the different projects that you're managing, you're definitely part of the solution here with our housing challenges. And you know, this council is trying to address those housing challenges through federal, CDBG and home funds, through nonprofit partnerships with Grassroots, NeighborWorks, and Habitat for Humanity, as you mentioned, and also through private, public-private projects like the Floyd Casey Stadium Development. But yeah, how you keep track of everything at Waco Housing, you've got my respect with the vouchers and the units and the all the locations and the rehab and the waitlist. You're definitely doing the community a great service, so thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
I couldn't do this without staff who allow me the time to research, find the funding. Sometimes the funding takes a long time, but, you know, it's there, so I appreciate my staff very much for allowing me the ability to do that, and my board frankly.
Thank you, Mel.
Okay, thank you.
City Manager Bradley Ford, will you introduce the next speaker?
Mike over here. I sure will. We've got a work session that I know others are excited to hear. I'm going to invite Deidre Emerson, our Deputy City Manager, up to give most of the introduction. We'll also invite our team from our design contractor as well, Perkins and Will. We're going to discuss the renderings as well as, I think we have some animation even, of the new STEAM Center, STEM Center at Bledsoe Miller Community Center. So look forward to this presentation, and Ryan, if you, Ryan Swett, if you don't mind getting queued up on that video.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a quick, that video is great, I think it's great, but a quick thank you to our Parks and Rec staff as well as the Naval Academy for hosting that Navy, Naval Academy STEM Camp that we were able to squeeze into the end of our summer camp program at Doris Miller Community Center. So a couple of weeks ago, we were able to do that, and so I really appreciate the efforts of the Naval Academy as well as our Parks and Rec staff who helped us pull that off. But we just wanted to show you a tidbit of what the STEM Center can be. And in September of 2023, this council approved or authorized us to enter into a contract with Perkins and Will for their architectural design for the, what would be renovated Bledsoe Miller STEM Center. And so today, we have our team from Perkins and Will, they will introduce themselves respectively, but they are here to provide you what the design is anticipated to look like, and we'll give you the timeline and then our next steps from after that.
Thank you, Deidre. Council, we're excited to be here with you today. My name is Casey Kent, I'm Managing Principal for the Perkins and Will team, and I have Shawnee and Emily here with me as well, leading our project management and overall design. We're excited to walk you through over the next few minutes. There we go. An overview of the scope at large, what this great project entails, exactly what we are focusing on, a little bit about the background over the last year, the process that we run through, how we've worked with the city, different stakeholders, and really have come up with this great vision and strategy to define really what success wants to be for the facility. Leads you through our design concept, and then also end with the overall budget and timeline, so, you know, to this point so far, as well as the steps ahead for the overall project. As you are all probably familiar with, we have a wonderful site here just on the north of the river, and the goal of the project is really to revitalize the building as it is today into this great new STEM Center for the community. Be on the parking to the west, the building itself, and the site surrounding the building, down to the walking trail and the new entry there in the northwest corner of the facility. Future improvements of the placecape and the east parking area may be forthcoming through a different project or a different effort, but are not included in what we are focused on here today. So as we approached the overall project, we really stepped back and took a look at what the vision for the project needs to be, as well as the path to establish that and the strategy to implement it. As we talked with Councilwoman Barfield and various others throughout the community, did a deep engagement, it became very clear that this needs to be a facility for science and technology resources, it wants to be an edutainment facility, combination of education, entertainment, and with the focus for that being for all ages. This is not specific to one demographic or age group. Really, it's a facility that brings generational wealth to the community, and we want to harness technology... we want to harness technology, you know, invest and invite curiosity, and just an overall community of learning through the facility. So through that, we've established, worked through the needs assessment and design preferences, overall operational considerations for longevity of the facility, and then we've done deep engagement with stakeholders through a series of sessions that we'll dive into deeper here in a moment. We've really been able to talk to those in the community, see what their aspirations are, what needs will best meet those aspirations, and how we can't just provide a wonderful facility to pull everyone together through that community of learning. We've also worked through with the city's flood mitigation requirements to ensure that the facility is updated appropriately and will be sustainable for the years ahead. So as we discussed, we did a series of community engagement sessions in person as well as online. In total, we had over 310 participants collaborate with us, which we think is a pretty outstanding number for a project of this scale and the timeline that we endeavored through. We had great participation through all demographics and age groups in the community as well, and that session really helped to inform the overall definition of success and what the project attains or strives to attain. Is there, some of the most desirable spaces within the facility are recording studios, teaching kitchens, computer and gaming labs, folks see themselves doing financial literacy, computer courses, culinary and nutrition classes, SAT and ACT prep in these various environments that we are creating, and, you know, really look forward to STEM festivals, art festivals, and fairs, career fairs, and overall this idea that we're able to bring the community together through something different that Waco just doesn't have today. They want to see that families can explore and learn together through a facility such as this, and that we're motivating and educating and bringing STEM to the forefront for those that it may not be currently. So as we looked overall at the design vision and strategy, really three areas of focus presented. Again, we want to focus on the community, flexibility, and the identity. The idea that we can pull parties throughout the community together, create that ownership and pride, and promote involvement through this facility, we want to create extreme flexibility. We want a facility that not only provides for the needs of today, but far into the future, and those planned uses that aren't known yet, but having a facility that can evolve and be resilient, became a key tenet of the overall project. And finally, we want the identity to be forefront and telling the cultural stories and honoring the namesakes for you to walk in the facility and know that this could only be in Waco. Overall, from a design standpoint, we went through a series of exercises and really arrived at the idea of the facility being this prism. Just as light comes into a prism, and from there, you can start to see the full spectrum of colors, you know, the community can come into this facility and really start to see a variety of perspectives across the whole STEM experience and world where that curiosity can be met. We're using this concept to dive into from an aesthetic standpoint, as well as a programmatic array of the different spaces and uses through the building, and we'll see how that is extrapolated. First, that's through the actual materials. We're using that literal RGB palette to expand on and to show texture and variation to help wayfind through the facility and help organize these uses throughout. And then overall here, we have an AXO dollhouse view, if you will, of the overall facility. There are two levels, and so we will walk you through kind of how these programmatic spaces arrange throughout, and then how we best see them being used and the different activities planned for them. So as you come into the facility today, we're in about a year's time, you will be entered into this space that really pulls you in, invites you to go further into the space and circulate through. We've got a wonderful graphic wall to the left, and I will note any of the graphics shown really are inspiration at this point. We understand the city's public art process and fully expect to go through that. We've started to show some inspiration on what they can become and how they lead folks through and pull and educate at different moments in time. So just to the right of that lobby, we have a direct access to digital labs. Think of these as computer labs, but flexible to really be more than that as the needs grow. These spaces will be provided with furniture and movable TVs on carts, digital room scheduling, and just all the parts and pieces needed for classroom scenarios to take place and for setups to best accommodate the planned group uses within these. Adjacent to that, we have a teaching kitchen planned. And again, these images are referential of similar spaces that our team has delivered to what these spaces truly are. Again, this has a operable glass wall to be able to expand the space out into the gallery that we'll see here in a moment, but the overall idea is that a presenter, a teacher, chef can be giving a course. We have cameras embedded in the ceiling to give a detailed view of the preparation. Those can be duplicated on monitors around the space for easy viewing and following, and interaction of being able to walk folks through different culinary courses. If a class is not occurring, this can also double as a catering kitchen for larger group events throughout the facility. As we march along to the top right there, the green spaces are maker spaces. We have a variety of planned uses through these. As you saw through the videos prior, we can have a number of different courses and curricula come in. These spaces can be populated with 3D printers, robotics, learning different technologies, and just getting your hands dirty. The furniture is flexible, the rooms can combine and conjoin into a larger space or individual spaces based on demand, and really provide areas for, again, students and curiosity seekers to fully explore with their hands in the group setting. The gallery space really ties these spaces all together. So those maker spaces to the right that we just saw all can join around the central gallery, and this space is really meant to be flexible. Traveling installations can set up through here as a key piece of the circulation through the overall building. Many folks will navigate through this area to get to other rooms or experiences, and so that provides a great opportunity to be a number of different uses. This could be set up for large events with tables and chairs, this could, you know, how summer camps can become an overflow space to any of those uses that we just explored, and overall is a great unifying central living room, if you will, to the facility. Continuing along to the top left there, this robotics lab, and then what we're calling the gaming lounge, just right there in the center off the gallery. Again, these spaces are meant to tailor themselves with their furniture, with the AV and technology within, to really help implement explorations into robotics and the tinkering, the using of your hands, and understanding those technologies. The gaming lounge, this is a great area for folks of all ages, not just teens, to come together and work in the virtual environment, game, compete. This has evolved into a really robust community, and we're excited to have a home for them. Adjacent to that and more enters of the building is the admin facility. Two offices, a conference room, and a break area are planned for the staff of the facility. Adjacent to that, there's a seminar hall. This is a smaller meeting space with great AV, reservable by the community. The glass wall can actually move away and dissolve and can join with the multi, or the multi-use space that we'll see here in just a minute. And that multipurpose room, again, is a large space. This is, you know, similar to larger conference spaces that you will find around town, but really versatile in its uses. It does have three garage doors that connect it to the front courtyard to allow for indoor active, indoor/outdoor activities to occur, a great amount of capacity for tables and chairs, as you can see in the setup shown, and just versatility in the various uses that can occur within there. We have flexible classrooms up on the second floor. Again, this can take a number of different uses, expansion of some of the programs or activities we saw in the video, overflow, or again, these could be defined and become more specific over time as needed. A recording studio for both audio and video is planned on the second floor here with a control booth and just a great setup for community members to come in and work on their own productions, similar to this. We have an open collaboration space, so this is an open-air space to the gallery, less acoustical privacy, but a great overflow space or a bit more secluded area of the building, if you want to come up and have a smaller one-on-one or small group conversation. And then finally, we have an immersive lab, and we're really excited about this. This room will use some really pretty great technology to make a seamless display, a 360-degree simulation around the room to allow community members, classes, teachers to really take that group wherever they may wish to go. You're able to jump around the world or through time at different stops and just fully immerse yourself through a variety of exercises, and this can range from very education-based, STEM-based, to purely entertainment, and we're very excited to see this space realized. Overall, on the exterior of the building, like that prism that we described as the basis for the design ethos, we've really taken a great care of creating a nice, clean, white building. Today, there's a variety of textures and age and deferred maintenance pieces that are being addressed through the project. The floodproofing necessitates some of the exterior being updated up to a six-foot datum around the building, and so we've gone through and really created this, this nice, clean exterior to then let the inside be a great variety and pop of color. But we are being intentional here on the exterior to have a couple key locations reserved for public art. Again, we may give some indication of an overall narrative to the project and what that can become, but look forward to working through the city's process to see how these spaces are best utilized. And we'll finally conclude here with a few before and afters of the overall facility. You're probably familiar, driving by this daily, this is looking at the same views, so again, we think these are nice refreshes. We've been conservative in mostly the investment being on the interior of the building, but we feel like the overall transformation and update of the facility is quite nice. And here from the convention center downtown, looking back across the river, again, we're able to open up a bit more light in some of these zones, refresh the facility, and just really take advantage of the different heights and volumes that the building had to the best of our ability in the use of the new programs. We're able to insert one more public art wall here in the back as well. And then our main entry, as we started off the presentation, again, being inviting folks in, creating a bit more space out here under the shade for folks to linger in the shoulder seasons, and again, with those new garage doors, we think this courtyard will become quite active in pulling folks in through the building. The purpose room. So with that, we wanted to also touch on the overall budget as well as schedule, key cost impacts that have been incurred through the project, again, are the floodproofing requirements of the city, and those have been taken into account, all engineering fees and the associated improvements of the facility to meet those requirements are planned now. The building has extensive need for, or need for extensive MEP and structural updates. All of those are being considered and setting the facility up not only, again, for use day one, but a great resilient facility for you over time and in all seasons. And then we, of course, are upgrading and making sure that the overall facility meets today's code. Many of the plumbing pieces of the facility or ingress, egress, accessibility components of the facility do not meet the current codes of today, so all of those are being addressed in the final design. And then overall, so we've spent roughly the last year on design, getting us up to where we are today. We submitted for permits with the city roughly a month ago, and that is currently in the process of receiving that building permit. We anticipate that coming back soon, at which point we can then move into an RFP for the general contracting component of the project, with the goal of that being awarded here by the end of the year. That will take us into construction for 2025 with a goal of delivering the facility to the community in December of 2025. And with that, we'll open it up to questions.
There's one more slide.
One more? Sorry, De, I cut you off.
So, Council, I just wanted to make sure, so for next steps, just as a reminder on where we are in our construction budget, it's 13.7 million. We continue to look and work through design for the adjacent playground equipment, because we want to make sure that that is conducive and consistent with the STEM Center, as well as we'll continue to work with Creative Waco to identify mural opportunities for the facility. With that, I also want to make sure that I express my gratitude to Tom Bach, Derek Altman, and Thomas Sherman. They have done extreme work to help us get to this point, and so I really appreciate them and their time for this. And with that, we'll take any questions may have.
Any questions? Comments?
This is just to confirm, the review for the playground is the million-dollar cost? That's like the planning, all of that goes into that prior to any groundbreaking, things like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll go, I mean, I'll go next, because I know this is your project, I'll let you close. I'll just say, I'm so happy to see this renovation on Bledsoe Miller. A long, long time ago, I played a ton of basketball down there at the Bledsoe Miller place. I love that, I love that place. I'm a little disappointed to see it not being a basketball court anymore, but I could hoop back in the day, guys.
Just go down the street, man.
Now just go right down the street.
What was your, what was your play style? You a ball handler, you a shooter?
I was fast.
Okay.
And I could jump.
Mayor, how long ago was this?
Six months ago.
Many, many years.
Sorry.
Focus!
I liked this project.
You opened the door, Mayor.
We've got, you know, you know, basic computer and science stuff that you think about on STEM, but we've taken it kind of to the next level with this recording studio and immersive lab, culinary kitchen, and robotics. I just like the direction this is going, again, to augment our local schools and really help our overall effort on workforce and education and engagement. I think it's part of the overall puzzle that we're working on in our, in Waco's workforce is we attract new businesses and have economic development, build tax base, it all fits together, so I'm super excited about this. And I will yield the floor to my fellow council member, Bearfield, who's championed this project for a long time. You got some questions, Mr. Reddick?
You forgot me. How did you forget me?
Grab the table.
No, I was just talking to Councilmember Bearfield. It's a beautiful project, and it's long been needed in that area. I'm glad it's been renovated, and I'm glad it's been brought up to a beautiful place where people all over Waco will be proud of a facility that we send our kids to, and our kids will get a lot of benefit out of this project, so I'm happy for that to be happening. And I'll turn it over to my councilmember, Bearfield.
I'll just briefly say I love.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we're okay.
I don't know why the mayor forgot you.
Because I suggested maybe he wasn't the basketball player that he remembers. But, no, I'm sure, he's a baller. But I wanted to mention that I really like the potential, not only for our STEM plus arts center here to attract some federal dollars and funding, but also these partnerships. My father was a Naval Academy grad, and it's really cool to see what was done with the Naval Academy. I think STEM- I think STEM education is definitely the future in terms of workforce development, and this seems to be a place that can attract and partner with K through 12, higher ed, and just good synergy with a lot of our major employers here in Waco McLean County. So I'll join my fellow council members in a chorus of praise, not only for the designers here, but also for council member Bearfield championing this downtown slash East Waco project. And I know we've got council member Chase on there, too. We don't want to forget if he has a word to say.
Well, I'll echo the sentiments of everyone else and say that this is something I think the whole community can be proud of. I couldn't be more pleased.
Thank y'all for this lovely presentation. I am incredibly pleased with how this has walked out. To first recognize all the staff members, I know Deputy City Manager Emerson mentioned the core team that has been working with her on this diligently, but I have to really point out that per the Naval Academy summer program that just happened and served, what, 200 kids? That transpired in about 90 days. They came, you know, the conversation that happened around the eclipse, so let's go April, 1st of April. And for us to deliver two full-day programs at the beginning of August speaks volumes not only for our community, but the ability for us to deliver on established relationships that we've come along in this walk. So thank you Parks Team for everything that you've done to facilitate that and make, give a preview, and I want that, Monica, that video needs to be run like nonstop on the cable channel. Give a preview to what will happen at Bledsoe Miller Steam Center, yes, for our young people, but also for our seniors. I know we've got another work session a little later about how we're advancing the opportunities for our senior community, but this is one of those, too. This is K to gray, is the other phrase that we throw around here, and it is for everybody to have an opportunity to work and play and learn in a space that is safe, in a space that is just created for them and committed to their advancement, and that's all of it. I think that all the conversations that we've had, not just me, but because I talk a lot about this and have been for the past seven years, but that, you know, thank you, Perkins and Will, because you heard me. And you heard the people who we were putting dots on the balls about what was important and what it is. I mean, it wants to, that it feels like Waco when you walk in, but it feels like a Waco I've never maybe experienced before, and opportunities that will just come at all places. We began with a conversation with our industry partners about what do we want our workforce to look like? What skills will you need? That's where we began. We began at Z and walked our way back to A. And I appreciate every piece of that. This is, is gonna be an amazing opportunity, not just for today, but for the future. And with the upgrades, with the ability, with the relationships we're building from a state, local, and federal perspective, it's one that will continue to grow and build. And I'm incredibly pleased. Apparently, Bradley, December 25 is my season because we're gonna be swimming, we're opening steam centers, so it's Christmas polar bear dives by the city manager and rocket launches by the deputy city manager. I'm here for it. So thank you all, and we appreciate you so much.
Thanks a lot, Deidre. Thanks, team. Appreciate the presentation. The next item is work session 2024-578, City Manager Ford.
Polar dives. I'm up for it.
It's an indoor pool. It'll be heated.
It'd be good for your back, Bradley.
Good for my back. Well played, well played. Our next work session is work session 578, discussion and update on the assessment of city-owned baseball and softball fields, facilities, and use agreements. Jonathan Cook is coming up, our Director of Parks and Recreation, as well as representatives from Hunnand Partners and Legacy Sports Group. They will be presenting findings from their comprehensive study of our city-owned baseball and softball facilities and also how we administer the usage of those facilities. We've got a really rich and inspiring baseball history over the last 70 years, and we're fortunate today to have a lot of community leaders and members that still care about this great sport, our national pastime. So looking forward to hearing from the team. We did contract with Hunnand Partners to conduct an analysis, inventory, conditions. They've reviewed all our documents, our fields. They've also looked at best practices around the region, and so their recommendations will certainly be thoughtful, and I look forward to council's consideration of them. With that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan, who will let us know who all's at the table.
Thank you, Bradley, and Mayor, and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to give a proper follow-up to some work that we've been doing on our ball fields throughout the city of Waco and try to continue some of this momentum. Both of the presentations that we've heard so far today, very impactful, touching the community, and perhaps no support touches youth in different ages and the life lessons and lifelong friendships that are made on the ball fields. And I know we all have those memories there, and it brings me back to a time to realize how impactful programs and quality facilities can be to kids growing up. Bradley was right, over the past year, we've been working with the Hunnand Partners team, a national firm, to provide an outside perspective, taking those blinders off to really see an inventory and assess where we're at when it comes to our ball fields. The scope of the project, quite large in some different areas, but the focus of today, we're gonna be looking at, I'm gonna flip this real quick. There we go. We're gonna be looking at, one, an in-depth look and talking about our use agreements, and then also our scheduling efficiencies and the potential of that as we look at our ball fields and our maintenance practices. Some of the challenges specific in this study, the supply and demand of fields, what we have, who's asking for them, and that public accessibility, making sure that we are being inclusive in our offerings, but also at the same time, making sure that we're working with our organizations and longtime partners to continue quality services. Also, look at, really hard at equitable standards of fields and facilities, and then those distinctions between our little leagues and our travel teams. And finally, one of the key areas were utilization of Riverbend Park and the amount of activity as that field sort of a foundation, eight-field complex, and how much usage we're seeing out there, not only on the weekdays, but then for tournaments on the weekends. I will say, we've been in this study about a year, and our Parks and Recreation staff with Susan Kraus and Cynthia Sims, y'all know that name, just instrumental in navigating our current landscape of baseball and softball management. We've continued to make improvements at Cotton Palace in Eastern Little League, really core improvements to get up to a standard and really catch up to a backlog of projects on those. As you know, we also opened the Challenger and Lake Air ball fields. That was a really big project as the old fields were, came apart of the new Waco ISD, Waco High School complex. And so a new field, new complex created there, but what's happened is obviously, we create one, and we've seen an increase from other organizations for new facilities that meet those standards, and also an increase of requests from travel teams. Those are teams that are located here, not only in Waco, but in the region, but to use our facilities. And we'll continue, we've seen an increase of tournaments. Just this spring, in early summer during the tournament season, we hosted, I believe it was 19 different tournaments at Riverbend Park. Every weekend, you're seeing that activation. And then we're also utilizing Riverbend as multi-sports usage, that's increased, utilizing the outfield for soccer fields during offseason. So we've seen the need there. We have gone through and looked at our inventory, increase of maintenance rotations, bumping going from that 10 to 14-day mowing window, trying to get on that seven to 10. And then also, just most recently, being strategic in some funding, we were able to work with the National Recreation and Park Association and Bobcat Company for $100,000 worth of improvements at the Bell Hill Ball Field. So before I turn it over, I do want to hit, we still have some current challenges, but these are good problems to have. You've got usage, people wanting to use the ball fields. But a couple of things we want to look at are the maintenance and improvements to land that the city does not own. Currently, we have two organizations, the Southern Little League since entirely on Waco ISD property, and then the Eastern Little League complex, half and half. City owns approximately half of that facility, or property, the other half by Waco ISD. And we want to look at where we're at on that inventory, going back to where we at. Is the answer new facilities, a continuation of that, or improvements to what we have and perhaps a shared usage concept? And what I mean by that is really looking at that scheduling efficiency, perhaps a centralized game and tournament facility. I utilize Lake Air, the complex, as an example for that, to where we have certain fields and complexes that these are for the games. These are where the lights shine bright in the evening, to where people can gather, a proper concession, proper parking, and then we utilize other facilities for practices. And finally, we want to make sure, as we're talking about the increased maintenance responsibilities, that we are planning and looking at funding and options for that. So with that, I know I didn't extend an intro, but I want to turn it over. We have Matt Avila from Hunnand Partners, we have Dario Sicciara, and then also William Knox from Legacy Sports Group, a wealth of information. They've not only been to Waco multiple times, looking at the facilities, but also meeting with stakeholder groups throughout different types of organization, even met with kids as well. So with that, make, turn it over, and we'll go from there.
Perfect. Thank you, Jonathan. And I want to start off by thanking you all for having us here today and thanking city staff as well. It's always great to be back in Waco. So to talk a little bit about the contents of our study, our team here started several months ago, met with stakeholders, came to Waco, toured all the facilities, and conducted a in-depth assessment of the ball fields inventory, which we'll summarize here today throughout our assessment. We then took a deep dive into the use agreements, how those are structured, some of the current challenges, as Jonathan mentioned, and looking at some best practices in terms of how that can be structured moving forward. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in a second. We also, throughout our assessment, looked at other similar communities, not only in the region, but also nationally, in terms of how they operate and manage their ball fields, and taking some of the success factors that they've found in those other communities and creating some strategies in terms of how Parks and Rec and the city of Waco can mitigate some of the current challenges that have occurred in the past. So from there, we'll talk about some of our implications and recommendations and strategies towards the end of this quick presentation. And also simultaneous to this, we're also doing an indoor and outdoor sports tourism assessment, looking closely at Riverbend Park and also other facilities in the city of Waco, and how we can best maximize the use of those facilities to induce more people to the city of Waco. That's both a look at current facilities, but also potential future facilities that may be an opportunity here in Waco. So to begin with our project purpose, as Jonathan mentioned, one of the core goals of this assessment was to provide the city of Waco with a framework that will mitigate challenges related to the use of city-owned ball fields with the goal of creating policies that ensure equity and clarity among all user groups and stakeholders. Our methodology to really achieve those goals included local market economic and demographic understanding, those in-person virtual, or in-person and virtual stakeholder engagement sessions, and then the supply and demand analysis, including those best practices of other structures around the region and the country. So this slide here summarizes our supply and demand assessment, which was much more comprehensive than many more slides, but to summarize, our assessment concluded that the supply of ball fields in the city of Waco is currently meeting the demand generated by local teams and organizations. However, quality remains a struggle at specific fields, which we'll touch on on the following slide. Riverbend is that primary tournament facility in Waco and receives strong use from team practices as well as adult softball, which is very popular at that facility, and then is primarily used on the weekends for those large tournaments pulling from all across the region and even out of state as shown by our place or visitation data, which is really driving some great hotel room nights in the city. The city of Waco has 21 ball field facilities, which, of which, five are under use agreements. A majority of those facilities are backstops at parks as well as schools. We'll touch on some of the quality and our amenities assessment associated with that. So from our understanding of the supply and demand in our detailed assessment, the focus for the city and Parks and Rec moving forward should be the continued improvement to maintain those practice and game facilities, which we'll touch on on the following slide, and then bringing up to standard some of those top backstop facilities to a baseline level for use by some of those organizations for practice and some game use. So to move forward to our conditions assessment, this chart here, which is a little bit hard to read, but everyone should have some printouts of this, is our thorough assessment of the amenities of all the ball fields within the city of Waco. One thing that I want to point out here is those bolded items or those bolded field facilities are those which are currently bound by use agreements by teams and organizations within the city. And we've also indicated those two notable facilities that are currently on land that is not owned by the city of Waco, or a portion of which is owned by the city of Waco with that ISD land being associated with those two complexes. So from this assessment, we looked at all of the amenities within these facilities. However, I want to point out that we didn't directly score quality, because quality of these fields and facilities ebbs and flows throughout the seasons based on maintenance of the fields and also can be subjective. From our assessment, eight fields scored a six or higher, with the remaining 13 scoring at or below a three. Those fields primarily being backstop facilities that can be used for practices and other use. From a goal perspective, we identified that the goal should be to allocate funds towards enhancing those existing fields that lack the basic amenities and struggle in overall quality, which you'll see in our strategies and solutions at the end of this presentation. So now to move into our assessment of the use agreement specifically rather than supply and demand. A key focus of this analysis was a thorough assessment of the current field use agreements of those five notable complexes within the city of Waco. And we also looked, as I mentioned at the beginning, at the organizational structures across the country as well as in the region to provide some guidance for future policies and organizational structures that can be implemented here in the city of Waco. Throughout our assessment, there were several items that were brought up as it relates to how use agreements are conducted and managed by Parks and Rec for these organizations, and some areas of concern were brought up from these teams and organizations, which are highlighted here on this slide. So the areas that were common and heard by many of the groups and organizations included schedule and field access. Parks and Rec currently requests the teams submit their practice schedules and game schedules, and they aim to reserve some unutilized portions of the schedule for other team usage. However, that has become a recent concern with teams taking a majority of the schedule for their own use. In terms of sublease restrictions, this was another area of concern where organizations cannot allow others on their fields. However, when someone else gains access to those fields, they can't remove them, so that was another identified challenge within the current use agreement structure. As Jonathan mentioned, with Little League, that is another key area of contention in terms of the new facility to replace Lake Air's old facility, and questions related to the ongoing use and needs of Little League complexes was brought about many times throughout our analysis. A few other key areas I want to mention, annual paperwork was another thing that many of the organizations mentioned as a key challenge. Facility improvement and maintenance, as Jonathan mentioned at the beginning, this varies by field. Some organizations are very passionate about the ongoing upkeep of their fields. Some organizations are very passionate about the ongoing upkeep of their fields. And there's some disparity between how much Parks and Rec does and how much these organizations provide for their fields. Concessions is another area that was brought up and identified throughout our analysis where certain organizations and group, the concessions revenue is captured by the organizations. However, based on the organizational structure, those breakdowns need to be equitable across all organization types. A few others here before we move forward. For-profit organizations, obviously, as it relates to some of the travel and private clubs. The use agreements are standardized for all organizations. However, not all organizations are the same in terms of organizational structure, including player fees and revenues, which we touch on throughout our strategies and solutions. And then finally, to, to wrap this slide up is enforcement. Parks and Rec indicated that they face challenges enforcing these use agreements. And we'll chat a little bit more about how some other communities have mitigated this challenge with their use of fields. So from our assessment, we looked at three regional communities and how they govern their use of ballfields. I'm going to do a deep assessment on the next slide of Temple. So for the time being, I'm going to move first to Mansfield, Texas. A few key areas that they've found success in with the use of their fields is giving priority to programs accommodated during the previous year and then making an effort to accommodate new programs pending facility availability. They also emphasized that within the given season, they give priority scheduling to those organizations. And then secondary sports are allocated on a space available basis. One item that they found success in was not allowing these organizations and teams to make maintenance or repairs to facilities without prior written consent with the Parks and Rec organization in Mansfield. To move forward to Georgetown, they have created a structure with user groups differentiated by resident schools, non-resident schools, general renters, and then tournament and national events. And then they found success in an online request form and scheduling software, which enables all to have transparency into how these fields are scheduled. So to look in, in depth a little bit more at Temple, Texas, and what their Parks and Rec organization has found success in, which we've utilized some of their key success factors in our recommendations and strategy, is a field use priority system, which is broken down into three key buckets. First, priority organizations are nonprofit organizations that involve recreational play and there's no rental fee for these groups. And priority use of the same field as the prior year is given to these organizations. And this includes Temple-based youth associations, Temple and Belton Public Schools, city youth and adult leagues, and Temple College. And then their second priority organizations are recognized per sport. So for soccer, it's Centec Soccer. And then for baseball and softball, it's Central Texas Youth Softball and Temple Youth Baseball. These organizations, when parents come to the city and ask, where can I put my kid to play baseball? These are the recognized organizations for the city of Temple, where kids are placed for that baseline recreational need. And that final bucket, the third priority, are all clubs and organizations that fall after first and second. And one key indicator here is they do not retain an automatic option to use the same field as the prior year. However, they do place an emphasis on making sure that those organizations are accounted for and have fields to use. The rental fees are placed on second priority and third priority organizations at $10 per hour for non-lighted fields and 25 per hour for lighted. Those rates are obviously their rates and may look different here in Waco. So I want to make sure to point that out. Maybe slightly lower than the current rates charged at, at Riverbend currently here in Waco. Temple, Texas has also found success in having an advisory board, which Parks and Rec here has. However, also a subcommittee. This subcommittee is called upon on an as-needed basis to work on new policies and get different perspectives and also provide shielding from Parks and Rec in terms of counteracting and working out some of these key problems and issues and making sure that all have their say within formulating these policies and structures moving forward. In terms of enforcement, this was one thing that was brought up throughout our conversations with the city of Temple, was they receive the schedules from the teams and organizations. And if they find out whether they send staff out there or hear from the public that those facilities aren't being used. The city of Temple, their Parks and Rec organization informs the group that they are going to rent out to other organizations that have put in requests to use the field. In terms of our strategies and solution summary for our recommendations, we are recommending the introduction of a category system for the use agreements. This may take several forms and would require a strategy session among key staff and ideally a newly created subcommittee. This priority and categorical structure would accommodate many of the organizations and really create an equitable framework to assist in scheduling of facilities as well as mitigating some of the current use agreement struggles where certain teams and organizations want access to fields and aren't provided with that access and are forced to, to look elsewhere. In terms of a subcommittee creation, the creation of a subcommittee that specifically resolves items that are brought about on an ad-as-needed basis can help with providing some guidance for many of these challenges and also bringing about strategic initiatives that could mitigate some of these problems, also alleviating Parks and Rec in many ways to, to really focus on maintaining these fields and keeping them up to standard. In terms of an online document submittal and scheduling system, currently Parks and Rec uses RentTrack, which is a strong software to do many different things for Parks and Rec. However, we're recommending optimizing that platform to help with scheduling so that users can see the scheduling of these fields and facilities and understand when schedule availability for certain fields is, is available. Additionally, we're recommending the creation of a 10-year maintenance and improvement plan. One thing that was identified throughout our assessment was teams and organizations are unaware of when improvements can be made to these fields. So creating a 10-year plan that shows in two or three years, we are going to improve the backstops of this facility, improve the infield will help these teams and organizations understand that Parks and Rec has a budget and they are working towards making these improvements across all facilities and not providing a bias towards certain facilities and groups. Finally, in terms of field rental, a categorical priority user agreement structure will enable equitable usage based on the size of the organization. Parks and Recreation will now be able to schedule more teams at the fields and not approve or have a non-approved subletter problems, which those can be avoided with having some field rentals imposed. So in terms of our next steps before I turn this back to Jonathan, really our goal here is the implementation of these strategies and solutions to create a more efficient, equitable use of these ballfields and facilities. In terms of an aggressive timeline, we'd love to work through some of these key areas and implement some of these changes for the 2025 year. However, we feel this may take a little bit longer in terms of getting full buy-in, which I'll touch on before I turn it over to Jonathan. And really an achievable timeline is 2026. In terms of those core action items, the creation of a Parks and Rec Board Subcommittee, number one. Two, that 10-year maintenance improvement plan. Three, formulating that categorical or priority structure for users. And then four, optimizing that software to manage documents as well as scheduling. In terms of the execution of these items, the first thing that we have to do with any project and initiative is get aligned. That being with city staff as well as public officials to get behind these strategies and solutions for the ballfields. Two is getting that local buy-in from the teams and organizations. Being a former player, I know how passionate not only these kids can be, but also the parents. So making sure that we get local buy-in from these teams and organizations as we move forward with these policies and strategies. Three will be creating that use agreement structure and some of those categorical or priority items for the teams and organizations. And four will be rolling out some of that implementation plan of what has been laid out. So with that, I'd like to turn it back to Jonathan to, to wrap things up.
Well, thank you. And as you can tell, a lot to dive into here and sort of digest. And first and foremost, we understand the organizations that we have worked with now for many years and the new organizations coming to us that want to work with is just very crucial and key to future success. These aren't just city fields, these are community fields. And so we understand the need to make sure to work together to finalize and looking at this action plan, what are those achievables and lay out that plan. But as we move forward, just a couple of highlights I wanted to circle back to. You know, we had the property ownership and usage of fields. And we mentioned potential working with Waco ISD as some of those organizations, those fields do lie on those properties, but also looking at that shared usage of fields and scheduling. As the study showed, the, the supply is there, the demand is, is there as well. But what we have to do is look at a way to manage that to accommodate the requests we're getting. And perhaps that's looking at a centralized game facility. I use the Lake Air facility being our newest complex with the two challenger fields and the six baseball softball fields. The opportunity for the other Little Leagues in Lake Air to come together to play at that one facility where those bright, light shine bright in the evening. Also looking at improvements to our current inventory, mentioned the backstops. Most of our backstops range in that 30 to 35-year-old range. And so definitely some needs for improvements there. And even working where you can play balls on infield where it's not just overgrown grass and weeds with cracks in the ground. And weighing that out as opposed to, to a, you know, a costly proposition of building those new facilities and where they go. And lining that out with that maintenance plan, it, it's important not just to look for the next season, but wanting some input and looking forward on really planning out five to 10 years so we keep the ship going forward. So with that, we'll open up to any discussion that you might have in regards to these items, our thoughts on the assessment.
Any comments or questions?
I don't have a lot of comments, but I'm gonna try and cool down. I'm gonna let the rest of you guys speak and then I'm gonna cool down.
Yeah, hi, thank you for the presentation. Jonathan, I think that, that you, I think the slide was doable and then reasonable as far as 25 and 26. I think that it probably would make sense for us to shoot for 26 and let me tell you why. I believe that what, this is a great opportunity right now to do a complete evaluation of all of our sports facilities and properties and all of our sports programming because we have tremendous opportunity right now. And I think what, and, and working smart and not hard, because we did a huge thing with the challenger field and the Lake Air field. And we did a huge thing, it's beautiful. Cut ribbons, Josh fell, it was great. But, you know, that is not realistic to redo all of the things at that scale. So what I think we should do is really look at what we have and what we've added. Because even with Doris Miller facility, there's what, eight acres of field that could be assessed to do a great number of things. I'm still aiming for cricket, I'm not giving up. But those are the things that I think the assessments need to be kind of linked to and addressed to. Because if we do have Cotton Palace, what other sports can we acclimate into that, you know? Cause baseball, I mean, I know for the baseball moms and dads, my bad, it's not 365 days. It's 300 and maybe 42. But those other days, you know, what could those fields be used for? And I mean, how are we doing multifaceted approach? So we're measuring twice and only cutting once. But giving an opportunity for all of our young people, old people, whomever's playing the sport, an opportunity to not have to venture too far out of their neighborhoods in order to get that same access. So, you know, whilst I understand that there's some things that we must do. I mean, you know, I've been, I came on and I, I was only a temporary baseball mom, but I came on looking at Luther Mitchell fields and, and what, what that looked like different compared to other fields. You know, and there was an equity issue with some of our fields and we know that. But, you know, but I do also realize we cannot solve for X all at one time. So, but what I, I think would be a better idea, and I challenge our staff to figure that part out as a whole. You know, because where are, you know, where are we doing for our, you know, the club sports, the school sports? And then, I mean, also looking at what the inter-local agreement is with Waco ISD. What are, what, what are they committed to and what not? Because it's one thing that if I know, hey, well, Waco ISD owns half of this property or all of this property and they've committed to doing this, this, and this, and we just need to do this, this, and this, but I don't know how, when's the last time we had looked at that? And asked them, what were they willing to do? Or what were they, what do we think that they're doing and, or not? So I think those are the things that would be helpful for not only our teams or whatever we're doing in our city facilitated sports, but those teams who are using, you know, public property for, uh, uh, their sport of choice. But I think the only way we're going to be able to do that is to assess it as a whole. Because, you know, our responsibility is to make sure that all of our, our kiddos or whomever who want to have access to sports facilities have that. And we're making sure that, that there is enough space and it's not a, if I'm saying this correctly, let me dust the cobwebs off. It's not a major league sized, you know, backstop that's supposed to be for three-year-old. I mean, you know what I'm saying? You know, so we have to make sure that it's done well and done right. But I don't know if we look at this from a Band-Aid perspective, we will do that. You know, because that's a small thing. I think we're gonna have to do a full, full assessment of, of what and how we do our, our record, sports recreation activities and what we own and what we, what it could be versus what it is. And then we'll know how to make the adjustments. Then we'll know how to make the corrections. Then we'll know how to budget annually because this is not going to be a one-year thing. This could be a five, 10-year thing. But we know at this point, hey, um, you know, Luther Mitchell Field, this is what's gonna happen in 2027. Hey Dewey, this is what's gonna happen in '28. Hey Brooklyn Park, this is what's gonna happen, you know, JC. That, and then that way people can live in reasonable and rational expectations as opposed to, but all the while, since we got this brand-new pretty, nobody's stopping from what's happening, just, we may have to figure out how to schedule better with, uh, Lake Air. And, but I think that there is a solution here. I don't know that it's, because it's not an us versus them thing. It's an us and us thing. And so we're gonna have to figure out what that looks like from our perspective. And the only way I think we can do that is if we look at it all.
Yeah, I'll, I appreciate this presentation in terms of kind of giving us a good sense of the current condition of these fields and just getting us to think intentionally about baseball fields and their usage. I know we've got some passionate advocates for baseball on this council. One thing I'd, along with Councilmember Bearfield's comment, I, I would like to see a more intentional approach to soccer fields in our parks. I know, I don't mean to get off topic, I know this is posted as baseball, but that would be something as part of kind of a broader approach. I know that soccer has grown greatly in popularity, but there's very few soccer fields within our city inventory to my knowledge. So that would be a part of that. I appreciate this, I think this is food for thought whether we adopt this policy or consider variations or different options. But I appreciate y'all helping us think through this.
If I may. Was never a Little League baseball player. But I was telling Councilmember Bordero last week, I cut my teeth selling snow cones at Heritage Park in Belton, Texas, starting in the fifth grade. And every single weeknight that we had Little League baseball going on because it gave me a place to be. And I think that that is at the core of what these programs that we provide as a city and that countless volunteers and parents work to put on. I think that's at the core of what they do is they give. I think that's at the core of what they do is they give the youth in our city a place to be and they hopefully instill them with values like teamwork, hard work, work ethic, moral compass and things like that. And I, I think based on the presentation today and based on my knowledge of who is running our Parks Department and what Jonathan values, and based on my knowledge of what our city council values, that is what, what we're here to do and here to move forward with is an idea of how we can continue to provide a place to be for the youth in our city through the great game of baseball. I appreciate, it is very obvious to me that this presentation was not hastily put together and I really appreciate the work and the effort that went into doing this. You know, I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Bearfield of, of the need to really take our time and determine the best holistic approach for this because trying to tackle one after another is gonna be like whack-a-mole and you're gonna find something else popping up as you take care of one of them. So I want to voice my, my appreciation for this presentation. I want to voice my, my heart that we can find a solution. I think that everyone here on this council wants and is willing to work to find a solution to provide places for our youth to get involved with baseball in our city. And I'm looking forward to, to what that looks like. And that is my comment on that and I will, Mayor, if you had anything.
Oh, I've got, I'm, I'm, I'm next. Because the mayor's always last.
Well, he let Councilwoman Bearfield speak last.
No, I'm, I'm next, the mayor's last. Y'all, y'all let me do this.
All right.
Mayor, you want me to go ahead?
Please.
Thank you. I don't like this, whatever you want to call it, I don't like it. Your goal of implementation of the strategies and solutions, I disagree with more than 50% of your strategies and goals. I'm out there every day with my people on our baseball fields. I don't know that you were out there every day on our baseball fields. If you were out there one day, you know some of your stuff here is wrong. And I'm trying to be nice about this. I am a baseball fanatic for our kids and have been 30, 40 years now. But if you'd come to me and showed me this before you made the presentation, I might have asked you to explain to me how you got this. Because to me, you did not explain how you got this information. I understand you go out there and you research and do whatever it is and I don't know how long, what, two, three years that y'all did this? I don't know, I'm trying to be nice about this, y'all guys, so y'all just bear with me. I don't know that you came to me to ask me anything about my baseball fields in South Waco and all over the city because I figure all the kids in Waco are mine and I want the best for them. And I want everything to be equal for them. But some of these strategies that you put up here, I'll fight you before I see them to be put on as a goal for us. And Bradley, I'm trying to be nice. I read this over the weekend, I thought I was over it, but apparently I'm not. You didn't take into account a lot of things that happen in the baseball community. I don't know where you went or what you did and don't care because I'm telling you I don't like this report. And I'm usually not this angry and this rude, but you have hit my heart and my community with some of your suggestions here and some of the goals that you want to put in and the implementation of strategies. I don't know who you went out and talked to and I guess I really don't care, but this is just a report that you're sending in to us. That doesn't mean, Jonathan, that we're gonna put it in full force. I think the council here needs to sit down and go by this one by one with you present, Jonathan, so you can hear what we have to say and why we're saying it. I can sit here and talk until seven or eight o'clock and we're gonna miss supper, but we don't want to do that because then we'll all be in a bad mood. But I just want you to know, I don't like this. And Jonathan, I will sit with you and tell you and show you which is the ones that I don't like.
I would appreciate that opportunity. You know, always want your input, not only from the community perspective, and it is, and having this discussion. And discussions sometimes with challenges are, aren't always easy. And so it's very necessary to have these in this setting right here to make sure that we're getting proper direction and know we want to take it for the future. At the end of the day, you know we care, I know how much you care. And, and so we want to make sure, to make sure we're intent, our intent is to get this right moving forward.
He used Temple as an example. We're entirely different from Temple. Some of what you brought in from Temple was okay. But did you take into account in our city, there are folks that use our baseball fields that do not charge kids to play with them? Did you know that? I didn't see it anywhere here. And I didn't see you making allowances or making something different for them that do not charge kids. And I'm not talking about scholarships, Little League scholarships or whatever, Little League's charged all over the city and we all know that. Whether it's a dollar or $10 or eighty or whatever, but there is an organization here in Waco that does not charge their kids to play. I didn't see you put that in here anywhere.
So I see the Hunden team nodding, can you, can you speak to that? How, how would a organization that's as the council members describing, how do they sit in this framework that you're describing?
Yep, so our goal with this was not to opine on any of the organizations or the local teams. Our goal was-
Didn't that like to me that you did?
Say that again?
It did feel like that, that you did to me. My personal opinion.
So all that we tried to show was the structure of other places across the country. We showed Temple, Mansfield, as well as Georgetown, however, three others that were national examples. We used Westfield in Indiana, San Diego County, as well as one other. We are just establishing that a framework of categorical or priority use makes sense and can actually benefit organizations that don't charge parents for their players to play. So that, this is step one, this is not an answer. This is so that we can actually benefit organizations like that and these policies can be put in place that account for them rather than push them aside.
I didn't see that in here.
We are not opining-
I know you're answering Bradley's question.
We are not opining on any of the organizations or saying certain teams should vacate their fields. That is not for us to say.
No, it isn't. I agree.
So we did not put that in the report, we were not focused on teams, clubs, or organizations, just framework suggestions. That framework is yet to be determined.
The only thing I agreed with you on was the condition of the fields. I was looking at you, the way you rated them. That's the only thing in this report that I really agreed with you. But everything else, no, I didn't. And Jonathan, I will work with you to help me to get this right with me. And I'm speaking for our people in our organizations in South Waco.
And 100% committed to that and we did ask the Hunden team that framework, I know that work keeps on, but examples. Waco's very unique in its youth sports offering. I say it's some of the best youth sports offering in the state and the work that's done, not just, you know, it's our community and staff working together. I often think of programs like Team Waco and, so I think the opportunities there and to have that continued discussion, definitely a priority for us before moving forward and implementing to make sure that we do have that alignment.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that, that's not in here like other baseball organizations coming in and trying to use a baseball field that has been worked on for years and years and years and all of a sudden it's up to a place where it can be really nice for the people that worked it and then other organizations trying to come in and take those fields. That is not in here. And that's, Jonathan, is what I want to talk to you about. And Bradley, sorry if I interrupted your, your, your answer, his answer to you, but...
No, no, no interruption. I look forward to being there with Jonathan and, and you and other councilmembers that want to do, to dial this in.
I'm just trying to cool down.
I think, I think it might be good to walk back through the Temple example for a second because I'm trying to, you had like a one, two, three level. The councilmember just brought up, like, folks that are new to the party is how I'll describe it, new baseball teams, probably in the select baseball era, that's where a lot of things have moved. But in the Temple model, they would be like on the third priority. They're not an established Little League or established team that has been playing in, in, let's say, Temple and not a recognized association of a sport. So is that, am I reading that right, the one, two, three kind of waterfall?
So what I want to emphasize here is this is their structure, this is not the structure that could or would be put in place here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get you to a point where the, the council's hearing kind of what that looked like. Because it really respects the historical users of fields.
Correct. So as the next step, first priority users, this is up to you all and ideally a subcommittee to account for organizations like the one councilmember Rodriguez just mentioned. Benefiting them through, because they provide that baseline recreational need, they do not charge their players, they are providing great service to those youth. Like you mentioned, if you adopted this structure, they would be in the third priority, but that's not what we're saying. That is what Temple's doing. Organizations like that, based on your all's decision, it's not for us to say, could be a first priority. That organization would receive benefits because they don't charge their players, they don't, they're providing that baseline need, they have done for so many years. So that structure would actually benefit those groups and organizations and put them in the first priority. Again, this is just showing it based on Temple's example, not necessarily adopting how they do it, but adopting just the overall structure.
Correct.
I'm done.
Good.
I don't want to say anymore.
Thanks. I know you're running into a bit of a buzzsaw here because there's a couple of us up here that are very passionate about our Little League baseball. And myself and Councilmember Rodriguez are both very plugged in. I've got a 13-year-old son who's been playing Little League ball for the last eight years at Lake Air. And Councilmember Rodriguez has been associated with it for years and years and her grandson and my son play with and against each other, it's a lot of fun. I like how you at least, you're, you're trying to help us with, we asked you to do this analysis, an objective analysis, so I do appreciate that, about ballfield management, best practices, state-of-the-art, kind of our inventory, which I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez that this sheet on kind of just telling us what it is and kind of how, really kind of points out how we need to do some work on some of these, like the 13 that are mostly backstops. And then trying to utilize those more by investing, investing in those, I like that idea. And it all gets around to me about the maintenance, who's, the management of it, the capital improvements, as Councilmember Rodriguez is saying, as you put those, who puts them in, who's paying for it? And then the concessions being associated with it for the last eight years, I know that gets kind of tricky too. But again, we're not trying to solve all of that in this model, we'll be talking about this for, for a while with, with Jonathan's help, as Councilmember Rodriguez alluded to. It was curious where you say supply does meet the demand, which intuitively, that's right, but maybe challenged locationally a little bit where there's maybe certain demand in certain places where that supply is across town, which that creates, creates some challenge, so we need to figure that one out. And again, 21 facilities, a lot of backstops. And I just want to say, Lake Air Little League, Southern Little League, Eastern Little League, and I think Councilmember Borderwood mentioned it, no, it was Mayor Pro Tim Young, about parents. This is kind of a community deal, parents working their tails off to make all this work and, you know, do, take, put in the extra work to make sure there's fields for the old 20 kids to play. It's a labor of love, it's not a moneymaker by any means, but it, it creates a great service for the community. And just while I can, I know Hunter Jarvis does a hell of a job for Lake Air, Jason Ramos is, is here, does a hell of a job at Southern and the Rampage folks, just, people all over the city care about the kids and, and love the game of baseball. I, I'm kind of like Alcee or Councilmember Rodriguez, I need to digest these observations on page 79, kind of the conclusion, or not conclusions, but strategies and how we maybe refine some of those. And I don't know if it's possible, but, and maybe this is too hard, Jonathan, but is there ways to put real broad, general estimates on what, I'm, I'm asking, I know, I already know the answer to this question, but on all 21, can you say a new backstop would cost whatever, 5,000, whatever the numbers are? And are we looking at-
We actually were working on some plans this week, obviously, when we say a 10-year maintenance plan, well, what does that look like?
Yeah.
And that's sort of the next step, the example. So there's definitely some equipment upgrades and maintenance things that we're going to be putting down on paper so we can properly plan.
Yeah, that, yeah, just general estimates, because I don't know if we're talking about a $20 million solution here or five or-
We want, you know, if you think about the upgrades, there's a couple ways to look at it, Mayor. First, Eastern Little League, we spent, how much, Jonathan? A few hundred thousand?
Yeah, about $150,000 on Eastern.
And then the recent Bells Hill improvement, about $100,000 with some, we had some in-kind labor as well, I believe. But in light of some of the council conversation, you know, I think we also have to look at some of these backstops being multi-sport. Not all of them, but it, it's not just going to be a baseball softball solution. And so some of them are going to need to be multi-sport opportunities, whether it's soccer or others. So let, let staff kind of spend a minute thinking about how we might spread those out across the community and there might be some thought we need to give to some of them being single sport and some of them being multi.
I just like the thought process you guys went through and just as we, you know, get to solutions here, obviously Jonathan, you taking the reins and Hunden guys appreciate your work on it. But just to kind of get it, get some ideas out here that, that we all can start working on, I, I do appreciate. So thanks, guys. Any, any other questions, comments? Okay, we will now move to work session item number 2024-579, City Manager Forum.
All right, we're gonna leave Mr. Cook up at the table, he's gonna give us a quick overview on senior centers and, and then I'm hoping to get to a few minutes of budget discussion as well. Laura, we'll move planning hearing items into the 6 o'clock for sure.
Well, well, once again, you know, it's exciting. I mean, to be, in honesty, the feedback, but then being able to talk about, once again, those impactful projects. And I want to say the Kada Gray comment sort of hit home here as I know you had had a previous request to look at programming and facilities for our senior population or as a little, coming more common, older adults. And wanted to look in, we are going to be looking at demographic trends that we have here locally and nationally. And part of this process, much like with the ballfield assessment, looking at other cities, what's being done and what are the models and comparing that to what we have here internally with our community and want to look ahead on some possibilities and opportunities. Now, some quick definitions, I think we know, senior adult, however, often referred to age of 65, but that can give or take. And what we're seeing now- or take. And what we're seeing now is really an age of when someone reaches retirement. So that number can go quite lower, but what we see is really starting about that 55 range to where senior centers will often provide different resources and services, really providing praise of entertainment, education, recreation, and a sense of community. And that's really what senior programming does. Across the nation, the NRPA, 92% of municipal agencies are offering resources and programs for older adults. So this is not a new concept or not a new trend, but it's something that we need to keep preparing for. As we look at the next slide, we're seeing a tremendous amount of growth in our senior population across the United States. Currently, Waco sits at about 14%, relatively on the upper side of some comparative cities that we're going to look at. That national average, however, is at 18%, and projected to increase by 23% at least in the next two decades. So you see the orange stripe in the middle. It really shows how that is becoming a really prominent age group in, across the United States.
Our seniors are our future.
There we go. So it is evolving. That's a great transition right there. Great transition. And it is unprecedented in history to see this amount of growth in this demographic. But want to hit on, I hit, it's a lot of challenges, but then also opportunities for us, making sure that we have an inclusive approach to the services that we provide. And what we're seeing is our older populations are becoming more racially and ethically diverse, but also more active. Different opportunities, you know, for a while, you know, we talked about a lot of seniors, you know, working on computers. Well, you have to think about it. We're going to get to a point in 10 to 15 years to where our senior are very computer savvy. So different types of opportunities in education, you want to be staying advanced in those areas. I mentioned, you know, healthy aging in Parks and Recreation. It's a common thing and something that we do as well with some focused program efforts, as we've started senior clubs at our community centers and working with our public health district, and then also working with different organizations like Keep Waco Beautiful. Both of these pictures are from some of our facilities. And whether that be gardening, arts and crafts, there are opportunities there for programming. And obviously, we hit it on earlier in talking about the STEAM facility. I think when we first started talking, you always think kids. But there are tremendous opportunities in some that we already have in the works to provide STEAM opportunities for adults. Now, looking at those other cities really quickly, we wanted to look at our peer cities. And those that we look at as similar organizations in size, but then also at the bottom, you'll see Arlington and Fort Worth as aspirational cities. And a couple of things that I really wanted to take note on this slide, that Waco population of over 65 did rank highest, the most high among our peer cities. And really, there's two models that you see of operation when it comes to senior centers. Those are city-owned facilities to where they have dedicated programs, to where there is often, I know Denton has an age restriction of 55 and up only coming in. And think about it. We, you know, we work a lot with kids and summer camps. So that's separation, you know. Even as I get older, it's like you want to have separation to increase that level of comfortability and accessibility. The other model is, and we, a lot of cities do this at both, Fort Worth does it completely, this model, is to where you have city-owned community centers, but they are not, they're all ages, activities for all ages. Now, some obviously will specialize in certain activities, but during the day, you would have perhaps more senior activities. In the afternoon, you transition to different recreational programming.
Jonathan, what is the asterisk there for Arlington City Senior Centers?
That's good. Sorry, they are actually in the process of a new construction of a new facility.
Okay.
They did close the facility. They've invested approximately $45 million in this new facility. You can see multiple metroplex cities. Grand Prairie is a great example with the work they've done at the summit, to where it is a full-on community center dedicated. A lot of them will have their own aquatics option, different meeting rooms and programs. So that's that asterisk, because they, December is the last I heard that they're expecting to open that facility.
Awesome. Thanks.
Now, looking internally at what we're doing, that slide had a lot of small print, but a lot of different programming options. But this is not just Parks and Recreation, City of Waco and multiple departments heavily invested in providing opportunities and programming for our seniors. To highlight a few, obviously, with the work of the council did in the budget several years ago, the property tax break owner. I mentioned our property tax break for homeowners. I mentioned our public health district and the work that they do, a variety of programs from healthy aging classes, emergency health situations, mental health, those all come into play. We also work very closely with our outside agency, Central Texas Senior Ministry, known mostly, and primarily, I shouldn't say mostly, but primarily, Meals on Wheels, a key component in keeping that program. But at two of our facilities that we're going to take a glance at, different programs, heater and fan drives, groceries on the go. So they are a key resource in our community to helping meet the needs of seniors. Waco Transit, there's transportation, we mentioned the Meals on Wheels program and getting meals delivered out, also reduce local fares, that's one of their offerings. The library, the genealogy program is very successful out of the West Waco Library, different book clubs, crafts, history. I always say, if our library's roster of programming is just quite impressive, and they make some intentional efforts in reaching out to older adults. Also, programs through housing, community development, mobility ramps, and making sure that homes are accessible. And then I want to definitely mention our Cottonwood Creek Golf Course, which has now reached a senior league recreational offering, over 200 members, classifies as one of the largest senior programs in the state. Just the other day, Kenny Dura, our general manager, gave a presentation where our seniors during the weekdays really are the core of upwards of 40% of the rounds played. And so that's activities, activation throughout the day, other people on the job. So very important and also a great way as far as wellness and physical fitness. And then I want to, we're going to get into our Parks and Recreation, our community centers. I mentioned that we have the two different models. At all three of our community centers, we do offer senior programming. And then we have the Harrison and Sewell Ross Centers, which are primarily for seniors. With that, we've got a quick video that I hope is going to play. And this is a collaboration we did with our public health district. And many kudos to Susan Kraus, Recreation Program Manager, featured in this video. I went to a movie over the summer. This was playing on the movie screen, part of the grand advertising that we did. And I was like, wow, that looked really good. But wanted to share this really quickly with you.
Are you ready to take charge of your health and embrace healthy aging? The Waco McLennan County Health District, City of Waco Parks and Recreation, and McLennan County's Live Well Waco program invite you to join our free beginner and low-impact fitness classes. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday morning through August, we will offer a variety of classes to help you stay active and feeling great. Classes are free and open to everyone. For more information, call 254-750-5431, or email us at health@wacotx.gov. Let's embrace healthy aging together.
So a quick sniff, and obviously very important. Always say, you know, knowledge is only information when shared. And we have to make sure, and making sure people are aware of these different programs, and the different programs at the community centers. We have, you know, over the past two decades, or decade and a half, you know, renovations to these facilities, South Waco, Dewey, Doris Miller, and then we talked about the Wet Blood So Miller and the plans for that. These are multifunctional buildings. And so looking at the footprints, the similarities, they're all over about 20,000 square feet, Doris Miller upwards to about 30,000 square feet, to where you are able to have breakout spaces. You've got classrooms, fitness rooms, so really just multiple opportunities for different levels of inclusive activation. We do have staff fully present at these facilities that host programs theirself, and then also collaborate with different agencies to provide programming. These programs, we open at nine o'clock, go to nine o'clock in the evening, throughout the day, different ages coming in and out, but then we do have specific senior programming. Mentioned, as y'all are familiar with, however, especially during the summer, and then when school's out, these centers and facilities do primarily serve as childcare facilities. Programming, I mentioned the weekly senior groups. We've started just this year, a nice grant, or training certification program with the NRPA for enhanced fitness that is targeted towards the senior populations. Blood pressure self-monitoring collaboration there, the healthy aging classes, which the video was on, even also work with Baylor University AgriLife Extension. I know a couple of weeks ago, the Granny Basketball fundraiser game took place. They practice at our community centers as well. And then coming soon, my mom's been in town visiting this week, and she's big. She goes to the local facility down where she lives and does the aerobics, the aquatic aerobic classes. And so that's very important. I know it was popular at the Doris Miller before we went under renovations. We're excited to get those back. And just this week, thanks to a connection from Deputy City Manager Emerson, starting to talk about some STEM classes that we can implement now, different things like Legos, seniors coming in and creating different creations. We've always done like ceramics, but they find that, you know, fun. I mean, you know, these are the parents now that are grandparents that are buying their kids these $100 Lego sets or trying. So it's a great application, and we're looking forward to programs like that. And as we wrap up, we, I mentioned the Harrison Center and the Sewell Ross Center. Now, these are centers that are activated on really a daily basis, but primarily for seniors. The Harrison Center, located next to Lyons Club in Lyons Park, a smaller facility at 3,800 square feet, but constructed in 1980 with the work of various organizations, and probably has not seen outside of basic improvements in painting, much renovation since 1980. It's still, it does have needed repairs in a facility like this. There's technology updates that are lacking now, operation of computers and just spacing. It's an open room. We've been talking, you know, as far as trying to figure out, how do we get some treadmill, like situated in there? So it serves a purpose. It also serves as a community rental room. It's not just exclusive for seniors. We rent it for family reunions, different parties like that on the weekends. It does not have dedicated city staff. And we utilize collaborations with other agencies for, as far as the programming at that facility. And then wanted to take a look at Sewell Ross Senior Center, 1,500 square foot. This is next to the old Charlie McClary Tennis Center used to sit, where the Sewell Ross Skate Park and Neighborhood Park is now at Waco Drive and 14th Street. And interesting fact, this was actually the city's first recreation center that was established in the 1960s. It was a former synagogue that they had donated over through the Lyons Club. We did find record of some improvements made around the same time as the Harrison Center in 1980. But once again, since that time, there's been not much investment made. And this facility continues to show aging, wear and tear. As you can imagine, a church built in the 1950s and 60s, there are accessibility issues and challenges that we have with this building, specifically being for seniors. We have included the renovations, or potential renovations, and seeing what type of options we're looking at in our CIP request plan. Like the Harrison Center, no dedicated staff, programming coordinated with other agencies. I mentioned Central Texas Senior Ministry, longtime-running Bridge Club program, and the Sewell Ross Boot Scoot and Dance Club. For nearly 40 years, on Tuesday, or Tuesday and Thursday nights, you'll have over 100, 150 seniors from across McLennan County come in and utilize the dance floor area. And to the point, though, but, you know, it's old theater seating along the sides, the floor is buckling, caving in in certain areas. I mentioned the accessibility. So we're really coming to a crucial point of, one, we know the senior population is growing. We know there's already a need and a want for this type of programming and a service that we want to be providing, but we want to make sure that our facilities and looking forward are in appropriate condition to provide this type of activity. We've got to be strategic in this, and we all know this. And the needs are definitely there. The wants are there as well. But looking at multiple funding and solutions, a lot of that really boils down to collaborations. When we looked at the other cities that we had on the chart, there was not one city that were tackling this by ourselves. They utilize different agencies to come in and collaborate to provide quality program, often with volunteers as well. We see, we've got to have a cohesive approach. We had a lot of different city programs and a lot of different organizations. So it's very important to where it's not just, you know, a senior class here, a senior class here, creating that strategy and streamlining our approach from our Parks and Recreation Department, really a city as a whole. These, you know, to get on the same page with everybody so we're working better as a whole. Collaborations with organizations so that we're equitable, inclusive programming opportunities, and then establishing that plan to make sure that we're able to modernize our facilities to provide a safe environment that's accessible for senior programming. With that, I'll take any questions on where we're at.
Any questions or comments?
I mean, I know we're short on time, so I'll just say, I'mma add or request a future agenda item to talk about this more in the vein of, the only way this is really going to work is if that's somebody's full-time job. So I would propose looking at, I don't know, what do you call it, a senior program coordinator, blah, blah, blah. So, yeah.
Great. Yeah, it's important we take care, I like the K to gray thing. It fits the whole, can I use that?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. K to gray. Love it. Okay, it's important we take care of the lifestyle and health of all of our citizens and all of our residents. Great presentation.
I'm glad you didn't say senior citizens, older residents. Thank you, thank you, respecting me.
I'll take gray of all senior citizens.
Who's the oldest guy on council?
I know what I'm saying. The next item is work session, item number 580. Bradley, City Manager Ford?
We're bringing up our Chief Financial Officer slash Assistant City Manager, Blue Kostelik, as well as Assistant City Manager Paul Kane and Deputy City Manager Deidra Emerson coming back to the table. They're going to give us a discussion of the city manager's fiscal year '24, '25, operating and CIP budget. And they'll take a few minutes to go through a few slides. And particularly towards the end, I've asked Deidra and Paul to present information on the history of funding for outside agencies or external organizations, as well as where I think we're headed in the coming years, as well as a recommendation for future years. And that's born out of our, a message the council's heard a few times recently, our competing demands and our flattening revenues, as well as our multi-billion-dollar backlog relative to infrastructure. It is, it's time to think strategically about how all these things are interfacing with each other. So we'll give you some forward-looking guidance on outside agencies towards the end of this presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Blue.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, Mayor, Council. Good to be with you again, discussing the fiscal year '25 budget briefly. Just some quick takeaways on this. Really, this was about balance in this fiscal year that's coming up. We want to balance the headwinds that we're going to have in the economy, everything that we're facing with revenues, like the city manager was just talking about, revenue's starting to flatten a little bit. We need to be, we need to be cognizant of that. But also, we need to be aware of, we're trying to really provide that best-in-class service for our community, while also taking care of the long-term commitments, prior authorized capital that we have in the current budget. So we're going to continue on with providing services. We're going to continue with the projects that we have in place. We're going to continue with the contracts that we have with fire police, taking care of our employees, but also still trying to balance that budget and be cognizant of where we are. So the general fund budget, I wanted to say, is based upon that 75 and a half cent tax rate that is above the no-new revenue rate, but below the voter approval rate. Mayor, Council, really, one of the things that we're going to talk about in this, like City Manager said, was the outside agencies recommendation. We'll go through that a little bit in depth. But really, the new CIP, I wanted to let you know, is not included in this $584.5 million budget. That's going to come back to you later on in the year. We're working with staff now, trying to build that package so that we can bring you something quality. Just as an overview, I won't go through all of this, but these are the budgeted revenues that we have. that we have, that budgeted 24, 25, the general fund 202 and a half million on top of that 595 total for, for revenues. Moving through to expenses, again, a balanced budget on the general fund side as we're required to by law, 202 and a half million on 584, almost 584.5 million dollars of expenses. And the general fund by department breakouts, as you can see, since we've been with you for, for the last couple of meetings, nothing has changed on this bottom line. We have, we have shifted a little bit, like we said in that last meeting, for animal services, the, what we're having to do in, in hiring for that. So a little bit of that's come out of our, our contingency fund and moved into animal Quickly on the, the remaining budget calendar, we are here with you today. Next week, we will be in a special call city council meeting that will be for the public hearing on the proposed budget and the budget adoption for fiscal year '24, '25. The very next Tuesday after that, September 3rd, we will host a public hearing on the tax rate and then the emergency reading on the tax rate ordinance. Mayor, Council, with that, I will turn this over to Assistant City Manager Paul Kane.
Thank you, Blue. Good to be here, Mayor. Mayor, Council, I'm happy to have Deputy City Manager Emerson with me today to provide her knowledge and expertise on the history of, of some of our external agency funding. And she and I will be tag teaming this together as we go forward. All right. So the first thing I wanted to show is, there's a lot of numbers here, obviously, but this is a five-year history of, of our external agency funding that we've experienced over the last few years. You'll see a couple of descriptions here and, and these are ways that we thought kind of categorized some of these expenditures. For example, at the top, you'll see discretionary in the first two sets of numbers and then a total discretionary number. Those are essentially at council's option, people apply for those and those are funded. So you see some of the history there. We in fiscal '25 have about 1.8 million that is committed to funding of these discretionary accounts. You can see overall, the number's about 10.2 million down at the bottom of the page, but that includes things that are recurring agency contributions, for example, our economic development grants, McLennan County payment for tax collection, appraisal district services. So there's lots of things that we pay outsiders to do for us that are listed down the page. But the focus of our discussion today will be all of those two discretionary categories that total 1.8 million dollars. That's where we'll be focusing our attention today. With that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Emerson.
And just to give some additional perspective on the, the background, the external agencies have included various types, whether it's some, some are civic organizations, nonprofits. Oftentimes, they have specific projects that they are working on and/or it's a one-time, initially, it came to us as a one-time opportunity to fund and support that entity. So over the last five years, we've seen, as Paul identified, we've seen over the last five years, that discretionary area has grown by $374,000, as well as in current agencies, the funding for those have, our $537,000, that way it has grown. And some of those increases, as I mentioned, are, one, just philanthropy. We as a city organization have been seen as the one who can come, individuals and entities can come to for support and service. And/or there's been special initiatives, things that we wanted to, that were a mission or priority of the council that the nonprofit or entity was providing that we wanted to support. We also know that during FY 2020, there were a number of things that we were responding to based on societal concerns, as well as identifying entities' transition. If they needed alternative funding for a transitionary period of time, we've seen those things come to play and come to the city of Waco as well. But also the increases come because there has just been cost increases and inflation. And so we have, we've been in a period of time where we've had the ability to support those increases. And Paul will kind of walk through where we are now and the, the transition from those increases.
Thanks, Deidre. This kind of gets to some of the information that, that Blue presented earlier, but we have made some cuts in the general fund side. We asked all our departments to do that. The recommended budget for fiscal '25 is slightly lower than the current year budget. We made a number of cuts on the non-personnel expense side of things, almost 10%. We know from previous discussions with council over the last, since our May retreat and even back before that, that our infrastructure needs far exceed our funding capacity. Our five-year capacity on the general government side is around 145 million dollars. In our five-year CIP request, we have about 903 million dollars of requests in there right now. Streets is about 620 million, bridges 46 million. We are working with the departments now. We've identified about another 180 million dollars of capitals that's, that needs to be in the plan as well. So a lot of needs. If we were to upgrade all of our poor streets across the city, it'd be almost a billion dollars, 830 million. So we can see that our needs are to meet the, the standards that we all would like to have, it's really unaffordable, so we have to make some choices. And that's where we are today. There are inflationary impacts, as Deidre mentioned, those impacts that are affecting those external agencies are certainly affecting the city. For example, in fiscal '22, our operating expenses were about 40.3 million dollars. Today, in the fiscal '25 proposed budget, it's 41.8 million. And if you inflated that '22 number up, it should be around 46. So we are, we are not keeping up with inflation. We're being very efficient in how we budget for supplies, materials, those kinds of things. We're trying to be as innovative as we can and also make sure that we're not over-budgeting for things and being as correct as we can in our budgeting. So we've been able to keep those operating expenses essentially well below inflationary adjustments. And as Blue mentioned also, compensation is, is also something that we continue to hold in high importance, and though the council does as well. Our public safety contracts, as mentioned earlier, those are, we're in our second of the three years in that process. And so we want to obviously fulfill those commitments that we've made contractually. And then to our general employees, we want to remain competitive. We want to retain the employees that we have, because as we all know, everything that the city does is done by the employees who work here. And so we don't provide the services that our public, that the public's looking for without our employees. So all of those things are causing us to tighten our budget and to prioritize our spending. So as we look forward with our external agencies, we have some changes that we're recommending beyond fiscal '25. Fiscal '25's budget will be where they are today. We want to maintain recurring services, certainly those things that are mandated like tax collection and appraisal, those things will continue to go on. We have some in our local agreements, web mech, those will continue to go on. We have some where they, it's almost like privatization that we have a group or agencies that's providing a service that we can't provide in-house or don't provide in-house that they're providing for us. So that's more of a direct benefit. That discretionary group that I talked about at the outset here, that 1.8 million, that's the area that we would like and recommend actually for your consideration as we move forward into the future. Beginning in fiscal '25, it will be at 100% and then decline over the next four years after that. Essentially to eliminate that funding by year fiscal '29, that 1.8 million. And there's some opportunities there for, it buys time for them to look for alternative funding, to refine their objectives, measures and deliverables so that they can, can get funding through other sources that allows the city to meet that recurring external agency increases that we know are coming. Appraisal District's going to go up, tax collection's going to go up, those fixed costs or those, those mandated recurring services, not fixed costs, but those mandated recurring services, we know are going to get more expensive over time. So if we eliminate that 1.8 million, that gives us an opportunity to meet those increases within our current funding rather than directing more tax dollars to them as they, over time. And it permits what savings is left to be redirected to some of the higher priorities like the capital costs that we talked about earlier and other improvements that council may wish to make. So over, again, the fiscal '25 budget will be at the current level and then in the future, we'll be recommending reductions to get to zero by fiscal '29. And that is something that we'll communicate, certainly we already have, but we'll continue to communicate with these external agencies so that they understand that, what the plan is over time. They have more than a year now before they have to plan for the first cut. That'll happen in fiscal '26 if council agrees with our recommendation. So that's where we are today. That's what the city manager's office recommendation is with regard to these discretionary sources to allow them to transition to an alternate funding source and then free up those dollars for us to meet more of our recurring services we have to maintain and direct some of the savings towards other higher priorities. So that's the city manager's recommendation. Again, you'll see that reflected in FY '26, '27, '28 and '29 budgets going on. So stop there and entertain any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, comments?
I would just note that this seems like a decision that will be taken up with each and every fiscal year. And so with that, I definitely appreciate the intentionality and, and cost savings-minded city staff recommendations, but each and every year, we'll, we'll need to make a decision on what we want to do going forward. So thank you all so much for this.
Thanks for the presentation, guys. I just, I would hope and I would, again, will have say in this as we move forward, but that we would be mindful of leaving funds available for programmatic requests for these agencies as they look to spin up new initiatives or, or things of the like, rather than just sort of admin operational funding of salaries, but that we would keep open lines of communication that would allow for them to come to us on, on a, you know, a one-off basis, so to speak, for anything that, that may be going on. I know we've specifically talked about this with organizations like Creative Waco and, and efforts we've had with them in the past of funding specific art programs and art pieces, but taking that mindset with the rest of our outside agencies as we tier down eventually to zero, allowing us to continue to be good partners for agencies that do good services for the city that we don't currently have in-house.
Thank you all for the presentation. I know that none of these decisions are easy to make as, you know, we're, we're, when you're dealing in seasons of plenty, it is very difficult to adjust to the seasons of want, yet here we are. And, and some of the things we have to figure out is the list and litany of the must-dos that we have as a city. Now, that doesn't mean that our outside agencies are not important to, you know, the, the movement and fluidity of our city, because they are. There are things that we don't do as a city that other agencies can do on our behest and behalf, and that is why they have served and been recipients of our fiscal support. With that being said, there, there, I agree with Councilmember Ewing that there should be some number that is set aside for the one-off projects or those specialty projects or those, you know, emerging projects that, you know, but we have no idea what they are and could be, but there's some consistency that I think is being addressed in this step down. And I think that it is fair to say in four years, that is a, a time to reassess. And I think that it's a fair assessment for us to, the agencies work that they do, the city work that we do to figure out how to make that balance. So it's not, it, it, because understand, we still absolutely support these organizations, but we're just going to support in a different way. And so I, I, I know this took a lot to get to a step down, but you know, our responsibility as fiscal stewards for all of our residents is, is the priority and that's all of them. And so we can't do, we can't do it all the way we were doing it anymore. Trying to do that is in same way and expecting different results is the definition of insanity and I don't think that we're insane. So it's gonna, it, it, it's gonna pinch a little. That's my Texas, P-I-N-C-H, pinch a little, but I think we can work it out. And I think that again, with full knowledge and understanding that we're coming from a place of transparency and support, that we'll get there. So I know it wasn't easy to do, Blue, welcome, jump in, the water's fine, but I know it is going to take each and every one of us to figure out and, and, and how we help them find other fiscal opportunities. And, you know, in the works that we do as we come and go in our positions in cities and, and federally and with state organizations to see how we help. And that is something that I know I personally am very much committed to, because we got to all walk this walk.
I agree with everything being said up here. We all have to tighten our budget, our budgets, our belts or whatever, and letting folks know that, hey, we're looking at this and you need to know this, to help them prepare themselves to whatever we need to do. And like Councilmember Barfield said, when we have plenty, that's not a problem, but we're having a problem and we're having to cut budgets from all our departments, so it's only fair to ask everybody else to cut their budget as well. That being said, and I turn it over to my mayor.
Yeah, great presentation, Blue and team. 584 million dollar budget. We are seeing our growth kind of cresting a little bit, so we got to be thoughtful about how we, how we budget these items. Police and fire, very important to the city. We've got to, and by contract, they have the, the salary increases. And we're holding our rank and file and the rest of the city employees to a 3%. But yeah, I mean, what you talked about, Assistant City Manager Kane, on the infrastructure. We've got a billion dollars worth of infrastructure. And I think we even, we talked about it one time, it's more like five or six billion if we were to fix everything.
Really, Deidre.
So over the next five years or so, trying to get to that, you know, it's not going to happen. So it's hard for us to tackle that as we chip away at it, 30 million dollars a year, leveraging some of that also, but we're trying to be very thoughtful about it and deal with inflation challenges as we go catching up with inflation on past projects that we've funded. So a lot of challenges and you've got, you guys have done a good job of putting the budget together. On the 1.8 million, we are putting 1.8 million in the budget this year. I don't want anybody to say we're not doing that. We'll look at it again next year. You're sending the message, which, which I agree with. When you go from 1.3 million to 1.8 over just a couple of years, I think it, it requires you to look and see, well, what, what, why did we do that? And look at the cost benefit a little bit for the taxpayers, for the taxpayers' good. There's some of these that, that I don't want to paint a broad brush on all these folks. They're all doing great work and every one of the outside agencies that we contribute to. But yeah, let's, let's take a closer look in the next year's budget. Again, we're approving what we said we would do and, and some of the programmatic things that, that Mayor Protem Ewing talked about, I think makes sense too. But bring a look at that next year also, but we all, we need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and we will continue to do that. Appreciate the report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item is work session 2024, 581. Are we going to still try to do that, Bradley?
We'll do it in the six o'clock session.
Okay.
And just for the viewing public, I think, well, the six o'clock session will start a few minutes late, I'm guessing 6:10 to 6:15.
Why don't we just say 6:15 and then for everybody that shows up, tell them it starts at, right in there, 6:10 to 6:15.
Sounds like a plan.
Are there any requests for future agenda items, guys?
I stated earlier.
Earlier? Okay, that being the case, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:56 PM.
Mayor, we are skipping executive session, so we are now recessed.